This conference will now be recorded.
Good afternoon, everyone. The time being 4:45. I'd like to call this meeting of September 4th, 2025 to order of a stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. So we have Selectman Hanson, who will be online this evening.
Again?
Yes, again.
Means we have surgery on my knee Tuesday.
Right. So he cannot drive.
So just call if you need lunch, John. I'll bring it to you.
By the beach.
All right. So announcements, fall cleanup has changed. It is now the week after the original published date. So the new date is going to be Wednesday, October 15th through Saturday, October 18th. And that's up on the website, the new dates. Okay.
I asked Mr. Chairman, I asked Director Duval to get it corrected on DPWs and Tim is going to put it on ours on the town website.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Any other announcements from the board? Anything, John? Online?
Nothing for me.
All right. Approval of August 21st, 2025 meeting minutes. So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written of August 21st, 2025.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I didn't see anything in particular.
It was something about the, the, let's see if I can find it, the truck route sign?
Truck route.
On, when I spoke about the signs on that seemed like it was saying that yeah, it pointed to the Walmart truck group, but it shows that all of the road is a truck.
Yeah. And Mr. Chairman, I, if you would like, I can answer that now because I've done the research up there and it
Did you have something in the meeting that you wanted to have corrected?
Yes, and I'm trying to find it here.
So on page five of five, that was where you're talking about Lowe's and Sherwood Drive. Didn't know if that was it. Yeah, right there with the truck route.
Only a truck route that goes directly to Walmart. But what the problem is, is that the truck route doesn't point to Walmart. It just shows that as a truck route.
Okay.
It's at the end of the road, end of their driveway.
Yeah, but it doesn't say that's the truck. It looks like it's Sherwood Drive. It's all the truck.
So do you want anything added into that?
I think it was that the sign incorrectly shows the truck route as being all of Sherwood Drive.
And I have the solution there, but
All right. So we'll you, so we'll add that in?
Yeah.
All right.
I have something.
Can you just repeat that again, John? So she can add it in?
Okay, remove only a truck route.
Remove only a truck route. Okay.
That goes directly to Walmart and put an add a sign pointing the truck route to Walmart.
A sign pointing to the truck. Okay. All right. And
On page four of five, Selectman brought up the front doors to Town Hall and her concerns, so on and so forth. And at the end of that paragraph, there should have been a consensus that what the DPW director was going to look into that.
Whereabouts is that on page?
Four or five, three quarters of the way down.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yep.
Brought up the front door. Okay. All right. We'll add that in. Anything else?
Page four or five.
Okay.
Um, I think it's fifth paragraph. Lekman Dawson brought up a discussion about the proposed flood plain map and some elevation areas that you feel are marked incorrectly. If we just leave out elevation.
Okay.
Because I'm not saying, you know, elevation lines. It's just that, yeah, if we just leave that out, I think it'd be better.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we will send these back. So I'm going to, I'll just withdraw my motion for that. That was the only, that's the only one we had to approve. Everything else is caught up. And you didn't have anything, John?
No, I don't.
All right. All right. Hang on. All right. We have Attorney Ari Pollak, the Project Winnie Business Park Drive.
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Evening.
Good afternoon, I guess. I'm not used to being so early. Thank you for doing early meetings. Appreciate that. My name's Ari Pollak. I'm with the law firm of Gallagher, Callahan and Gartrell. We're based in Concord, but the project is here in Tilton, of course. We're here tonight, this afternoon, to just go over the project generally and then explain the work that we'd like to do in the public right of way for some traffic mitigation relating to the site plan. Manager Hilliard was kind enough to put us on the agenda and we're, we're all rolling in and we'll be real quick for you tonight, but appreciate the time. We've been to the zoning board, the conservation commission, the planning board, the sewer commission. We've been around the horn. We haven't been here yet. We've been approved for site plan for a 53,000 square foot warehouse for distribution. We are calling the, the site Project Winnie. We are not able to disclose the operator at this time, but soon enough, and I'm sure you're good guessers. And we're here tonight to talk about the conditions of approval for the site plan that came as a result of the planning board's decision in May. That's now a final conditional approval. We're working our way through those conditions. The two that relate most directly to the select board is permission to work within the town's right of way at the intersection of Business Park Drive and Route 132. And to ask for driveway permits relating to our ingress and egress from the site onto Business Park Drive. Chris from Langin is here to just go through some real quick slides for you. Frankly, they're pulled from the materials the planning board has already seen. And our traffic information, both our study of generation of traffic and our proposed intersection mitigation plan are both in front of DOT right now. DOT knows we're coming here tonight to discuss these off-site improvements with the town. They have provided a few things frankly for us to investigate further, not changes or requests for changes. We'll be reporting back to them, but we wanted to give you the most current information and then of course, answer any questions you've got as a board. We either could have you make a motion tonight to authorize the work, or we could ask you to direct us to town staff as the conversation with DOT unfolds.
Okay.
Thanks so much. I'll turn it over to Chris.
All right. Yeah, he's gonna, he'll get up to the podium.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Chris McLean with Langin Engineering. Our office is in New Haven, Connecticut, here as the traffic engineer for Project Winnie. So as Ari mentioned, we've been coordinating directly with the New Hampshire DOT for the improvements for Project Winnie at the intersection of Route 132 and Business Park Drive. The, these improvements are not necessarily required based on the volume of traffic that this project is going to generate, but more likely based on the size of the vehicles that currently use the road. And, you know, we require a little bit of widening to kind of, to handle some of those larger truck movements. The, the kind of the curb radii aren't necessarily large enough, even today, as I was out there, they kind of trucks just kind of turn into the site or use the current shoulders to make their movements. So the plans here, these are roadway improvement plans, striping plans, grading plans. What these do is we're planning on doing some full depth pavement replacement along the wings of the, of the intersection to allow for those larger truck turning movements. I included an aerial there so you can kind of locate yourselves with regard to the existing. And we're able to handle a WB 67 size vehicle coming in and coming out at the same time with these movements. So based on some of the photos and things that we've seen while we were out there, the, the grades are relatively flat as you kind of go towards the brush areas. So I like to say we're more so formalizing the use of the gravel, gravel shoulders as a, as a pavement section rather than continuing to use it as just a gravel shoulder area. Again, as Ari mentioned, we're in front of the New Hampshire State DOT. They've seen conceptual versions of these plans and they've seen the plans as you see them here today as a construction level. They've offered us some preliminary comments, mostly with regard to the drainage pipe that's underneath the road. So the drainage pipe that's underneath the road, we were advised that it is town property, not state property. It's right along the line between the two. They advised us to do an inspection of the pipe to confirm its condition and some, take some measurements to see what the size of the pipe was, how, how deep it is and the adequacy of it on the inlet side and the outlet side to make sure that wasn't clogged or anything of that nature. So I was out there earlier today. I can report back that it is in very, it's in good condition. There's no blockages. There's a little bit of dirt kind of on the inlet side and the outlet side. That's where the plants are growing and kind of trying to move in. We would recommend a little bit of routine maintenance there in some of the lower lying areas, but no, no major repairs we feel are required. And the, the widening itself is going to be a far enough distance away from the slopes as they slope down and towards the ditch that we wouldn't need to do any sort of additional reconstruction to, to the, to the drainage itself. The last thing that the DOT had asked of us was just to confirm the pavement section itself with four inches of pavement with about 18 inches of heavy duty fill that is New Hampshire DOT approved. We've taken that section directly from some of the state materials with regards to pavement sections. And we just, we're planning on using that state approved section unless the town feels strongly otherwise.
And that's coming, that would be the section coming in and out. That's where you're paving.
Right. So we're going to be taking the gravel shoulder out and we're going to be filling it in with a standard pavement with the, with the compacted fill and then the asphalt on top that is typical of, of what the DOT would, would require for such a road.
Chris, approximately how far up are you paving?
About 125 feet.
Okay.
We're, we're doing some, we're, like I said, we're, we're increasing the pavement along the sides. And then what, what we're planning on doing is milling the entirety of the 125 feet up from sandborne, just to create a nice, smooth plane for water to wash off so that there isn't kind of a shoulder and little bumps and everything. Frankly, the pavement could, could use it. And since we're doing the, kind of the wings there, we figured make, make it nice. The other piece to why we're in front of you here is, as Ari mentioned, the, our direct connections to Business Park Drive as it is town, town owned. So we are proposing driveways. Believe it's, yeah, four, four driveways or five driveways. I'm sorry. But the, and then we're also proposing a crosswalk across the street because we do have a satellite parking lot on the north side of Business Park Drive for some of the storage of vehicles as they get ready to kind of do their deliveries. So we're putting a crosswalk. Oh, sure. So we're looking at CS 101, which is the second to the last page in your pamphlet. So that's kind of the southern half where the warehouse and one of the parking areas is. And then the last page on CS 102 is that is on the north side of Business Park Drive where there's just going to be a vehicle storage lot. And so we don't foresee a significant amount of employees having to cross the road, but rather than leave it up to chance, we feel that we would want to make sure that the, the two parcels feel connected and that any sort of employees don't need to kind of jump across the road. So we're, we're planning on putting a crosswalk with sidewalks and ADA accessible ramps in order for people to walk across in a safe manner. We're not planning on doing any other sidewalks along the road, just the driveways, the curbs. We do have some utility connections, but that, that falls under a different permit. So with that, that kind of summarizes my, that my description of the site. I'm happy to take questions, answer any comments of that nature.
So how many, how many driveway permits are you, are you guys going to be pulling?
Right. So if you look at that CS 101 sheet, what we've got, and let me just explain it in a little more detail. That's why I jumped up. There's a, there's a portion of the site that contains the warehouse and the loading areas and employee parking. And those are served by four driveways off of Business Park Drive. There is this additional area on the north side of the street that Chris was referring to, which is for vehicle fleet parking. And that's one driveway in and out. So four on the south, one on the north.
Okay.
All right. And just to be clear, the Business Park Drive, of course, does not involve DOT in the same way that the intersection does. So the planning board with, has already reviewed the connections to the street, but we needed permission from the town to make those physical connections.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry.
I'll just, just in case they have questions.
Is it, that's something that we have to give approval for? Is the planning board
Coming off the road, coming off of Sandborne Road.
Any alterations to the road?
Right.
Comes from the board of Select.
Okay.
Driveway cuts, just simple driveway cuts. It's through the planning board.
So just one thing I did notice is that the fire hydrant previously was probably 10 to 12 feet from the road and now it's four feet. I didn't know if that's going to be an issue because when they plow the road, it now buries fire hydrant and the fire department has to get out there and dig it out. Is that?
I don't know the answer specifically. I can tell you that as part of the planning board process, the plans were reviewed by the, I'm going to get this wrong, but the Northfield, Tilton Fire District.
Northfield.
All right. Almost, but different. And they, they had some comments about in, individual issues deeper in the site, but they did not have concerns relating to the frontage. And then we also had the plans submitted to peer review at Keach Nordstrom, Steve Keach. He made a whole series of suggestions which, and, and, and we, we took them all. They were all helpful. So I feel like these issues were pretty well vetted before we got to the planning.
Well confused, you know, our portion of it is just allowing you to widen it. And the planning board reviewed that part.
Correct.
Yeah. If I remember correctly, they added that hydrant as one of their comments early on in that process.
I do know there were some comments specific to the hydrants. Where, where they moved, I couldn't tell you. We did whatever we were asked to do.
Yep. Okay.
So as far as DOT is concerned, I, I think what we're, what we're looking for is a motion to approve the work in the right of way, consistent with the plan that we've submitted to DOT. If that plan changes as a result of DOT's work, we may have to come back and ask you to recognize something different or, you know, consider something different. But we've, they know we're here. They know what we're showing you. They didn't throw up any red flags and say, don't bother. We're going to change it in five minutes. So I feel like we're in pretty good shape to ask you for a motion.
So this is the plan that they submitted?
We, we gave it to them.
I'll make that motion.
I'm not done asking. I haven't got to ask my question.
Yeah.
CS 101, you are trenching in our road and it's unclear to me on this print, why? What's it for?
So there are, the electrical service on Business Park Drive is, is underground. So and the conduit bank is, is on the north side of the street. So in order for us to serve this building, we are going to have to trench underground. There's also under, the sewer is in the middle of the street. So we're planning on condensing those trenches into one or two in order to make our way across the street. And then that hatched area, the darker area within the road, that's the limits of our mill and overlay. So instead of having one narrow little trench going across the street, we're planning on milling it to create a nice, wide, flat, without any bumps.
Okay. Cause when I'm looking at, to me, it looks like it's going east to west, not across the street, north to south.
Yeah, I, it may very well be that we're bringing service down to that crosswalk area and that's a, a parallel occupation.
So the electricity is under the road?
I think it's on the shoulders of the road. It's in the public right of way.
Yeah. Yeah.
I will tell, I, I, maybe your concern is that we're going to do work to the public right of way that is either incomplete or has some issue that needs attention.
No, it's just, you're going to have to deal with our public works director if you
Correct.
Cut into the road. So it was more for me, it was more of a curious question.
Yeah, no problem. Ask away. I'll tell you the condition five of the planning board's approval requires that we bond that work and we have been in touch with town officials to get that bond organized. We won't be able to start the work without the bond in place.
Okay. If we can go back to the drainage on the 132 Business Park Drive entrance, it certainly looks like maintain and protect this existing headwall. I presume that's where the drainage is up there.
Yes. Yeah. So the, so this plan is also rotated with north is to the left, just to orient, orient yourself. And yes, the, the, the underground pipe runs parallel to Route 132.
Right. But it's up, definitely up on, on the town's road.
Yeah. And the, and the DOT had advised us that that pipe is town property.
Okay. So then, and I don't have any, it certainly must be. But my question is, there is, they just did a ditching project on this road a number of years ago. Did they run a culvert down underneath Business Park Drive? Or in other words, when the water comes down Sandborne Road in the new ditches, how does it get beyond Business Park Drive?
So it, so the grades, the, the water would run from the left side of this page to the right towards the, the wetland that is south of our site. And so that's, that's what this pipe does is it catches.
I'm not talking about that pipe. I'm talking about at the entrance to Business Park Drive down on the state's right of way where Business Park Drive about Sandborne Road, right now, before you make alterations, is there a culvert there going under the road so that the water coming down Sandborne Road goes under and doesn't sheet over?
So on the north side of the site, what the water on Sandborne does is it sheet flows to the, to a ditch on the east side of Sandborne, and then it proceeds to go under Business Park Drive in that culvert that we're seeing on the plans there. And then it ends up in the wetland to the south, to the south.
So the state diverted water.
To us.
To us.
And then
So who, so my question is, because I'm not aware of it, who installed that culvert? I mean, that pipe.
It's almost, it's in there right away, right?
Yeah. Is it?
Yes.
It looks like it'd be in there right away.
It's on, almost exactly.
I mean, I'm questioning the ownership is what I'm doing.
We, we don't know. It's the state or the town that's, you know.
So I think that's a conversation we should have.
With the DOT, right?
Because I don't believe we installed that.
It's in there right away.
The water in their ditching project.
We, we did take a look at it because DOT had asked us to, and Chris was actually out there earlier today. Pipe's in good shape. No reason to replace it. Who owns it or maintains it? I couldn't tell you.
Interesting. Well.
So you're just widening the mouth there so that tractor trailers have a better access in and out?
Right.
Not using up the other lane?
Correct. They drive off the road now. So we're going to pave the portion that they're currently driving in the dirt.
I've seen that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's dangerous.
I shouldn't chuckle, but
We're happy to fix it. It's, it's a smart thing to do.
Yes, it is. Okay. And your four entrances, I'm concerned about the amount of traffic and the weight of the trucks coming on to Business Park Drive from that site. And I'm wondering if it was designed for that weight. And that's a question I'm going to ask our public works director. And I'm saying that so there's no surprises.
Not a problem. Ask away. Well.
No, no, I'm telling you what I'm going to ask him.
Understood.
Like just so.
Yeah, I can.
We're on the same page and
I can share with you that the logic is to try and separate big vehicles from little ones. And that's why you've got that sort of loop around the back of the facility. But, but certainly a good question and we're happy to respond to whatever questions are sent our direction.
Well, certainly the number of vehicles that are proposed to be parked across the street in that parking lot, that's a lot of vehicles.
The smaller delivery vans, yes. What we had talked about at the planning board, actually, I think you were there, was that there's a limited number of larger tractor trailers in and out. They're making large deliveries, for the most part, leaving empty. And then the vans come to load up for local delivery.
Thank you.
Sure.
That it?
My most, thank you.
So I'll do that motion to was it to accept the plans that submitted to the DOT? We're looking for.
And approval of the driveway.
What was the most important one? To accept the approvals that were submitted to the DOT for the driveway. Additionals there for the radius.
Can I help a little?
Yeah.
Okay. I think what you're doing Okay, I think what you're doing is moving approval of the off-site mitigation plans as submitted to DOT. And then maybe you're making it part of the same motion to approve the five driveway locations shown on the plan?
Not on.
That's what we said.
No, not the five driveways, sorry. Yeah, that one, the alter our right of way.
Yes, for sure.
Why isn't the five driveways our authority?
Planning board's the driveway. They're not altering. They're not altering the road, they're looking for driveway permit.
We gave that to the planning board, and so ultimately it's Kevin that goes out for the planning board.
A statute that belongs to the planning board.
I stat, great. Kevin goes out.
So mine is just for altering the right of way, yeah. 132 and Sanborn.
Yeah, that works, I'll I'll have a question after about the driveways, but I don't want to disturb your motion, that works great for the intersection.
We have a motion, a second. Do you have anything, John, you want to add for a discussion?
No, I'm good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Roll call, Mr. Chairman, because.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Constantino, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Adams, yes.
And so, thank you very much, just as far as the planning board's condition of approval, it's number eight, successful town driveway approvals on Business Park Drive. I, we're we're just looking for some clarification on what we need to do to satisfy that condition.
It's semantics, it's it's a, it's statute by the planning board, but our DPW director does the driveway approvals. So we need to just get with him.
Yeah, okay, so.
We can. Board approves them, they get input from the public works director, but I think that was for this.
Right.
So I remember the planning board discussion, it was for this.
That may be.
Driveway permits, you just make the applications, and they'll go before the planning board, you don't have to appear. And then they have the conversation with the public works director.
Okay, so this is additional to the site plan, got it. Okay, so we'll, we we can work with town staff to make that appropriate filing, and it'll be the same as what's shown on the plan.
It sounds like they approved it, but they want the public works to take a look.
We didn't approve the driveway permit. We didn't have that discussion.
Will.
We will.
You will.
Yeah, and I thank you. No, I think we're in good shape, I I just didn't understand what, why the wording was, you know, town driveway approvals, and we wanted to make sure while we were here talking about the intersection, we were doing everything we needed to do without having to bother you twice.
No bother.
No, thank you. We appreciate it.
To see the development in that.
Almost there.
Yeah, almost there.
And I should have mentioned at the beginning, we've gotten our environmental permitting in hand, so we have our stormwater management permit, which I think we had had when we were talking with the planning board. But we now also have our wetland impact permit, a small area, but nonetheless has to be permitted. And so really, as as usual, I know they're listening, it's DOT we're waiting on. We'll get there.
Been there, done that.
Good presentation, thank you. Very thorough. All right.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to ask the town clerk to come up?
Yeah. Yeah, we might as well do that real quick.
Thank you.
I think my question was, because I didn't want to be confused, was when the state was here, and they they were talking about, and we were talking about the driveway permit thing. And they were bringing it up, and how any connecting thing on a town or state road or anything like that needed driver per. But for us, do we have to? As a select board, approve the driveway permit? Because it's the planning board that.
The planning board ultimately approves.
And they don't have to come in for that, they just fill out the driveway permit.
Fill it out, planning board, that's a conversation with the public works director. After what he is seeing his input, and then they approve it.
Yeah. And those can be done fairly quickly.
DOT was saying is, they want to know, when we have projects that are going to dump more traffic from our road onto their road.
Yes.
Hence. They're talking about five driveway permits, not necessarily going to increase the volume, they're, he explained they're dividing up their vehicles, they're biggest block. But nevertheless, there's a lot of vehicles.
But still, all of those driveways combined.
On that other side.
Yeah.
So there is going to be a lot more traffic ingressing and egressing onto their road.
Coming out to Green 11 at that.
Well, there will be.
The light, yeah, it's three eleven, like Johnson, so they're going to want to know.
Yeah.
And that's.
All of a sudden, the traffic's all messed up.
Yeah.
They just don't want to be surprised by the increase in the traffic.
Oh, she can use John's. Hi, Kim.
Hi, Eric.
How are you?
I am having fun, are you having fun yet?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I just proceed, Town Clerk? I I asked the Town Clerk to come up and just give you a brief like explanation of this specific tax deed situation that you were aware of last week. And later on, in a non-public setting, I will go over with the rest of the board where we are specifically, and the discussion that I've had with the property owner, former property owner, because we are the owner now, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, this is, we're talking about 80 Colby Road, and the overview is after the property was deeded, it was this Tuesday. And Scott and I received an email from the owner.
Okay.
And basically, the discussion was about the check having been sent, being lost in the mail, and a communication along those lines, and making things right, give us the dollar amount, et cetera. And the town administrator said, unable to do that, at this point, it's in the select board's hand. So there have been some emails that have gone back and forth, and they've sort of questioned, and I think, I think it's a bit more clear now that this is exactly where things are at, that they understand where where the town is coming from on this. So.
Has the check been received?
No. No, so, right, anyways.
It's really late in the mail.
It is, well, and they overnighted it too, they sent documents and everything.
They sent documents proving that it was.
It only got so far, I can see, you know, I've got the label here, they sent documents that you could see where they took it to the facility, we have your package, your Norwood mass. And then all of a sudden, at 1111 on the 20th in Chelmsford, on the way, and then there's an exclamation point that says delay. And that's it. It, and they don't have it, they've canceled.
Okay.
Are they new owners to this property?
No.
No.
About three years, I would say, well, two years and a day, so three years.
They should know when the property taxes are due.
Well, yes.
Last year and not paid, so.
Three years and a day, three years to deed, they haven't paid taxes.
Yeah, I got that.
On this property. We've sent notifications every year, I did make a little cheat sheet just from this year. If you're interested, what, this is this year's mailings, letters, then certified, and I sent also regular mail that were never returned, sent to both the owner and the person who holds the mortgage on it. So you can see, they've received, they signed for the certified.
They did.
And the mail was never returned, and I did make a note. I I highlighted highlighted in yellow, I think I told you folks this, this.
Yeah, you did.
I had made a note of the response when we had the discussion on the phone on the 20th. And.
Is there? This was an email to us prior, right?
Thank you.
No, it's. No, this is.
Okay.
This was not emailed to us, this is my summary of the telephone conversation that we had on the 20th, the day before.
Okay, I'm just, I have a selectman online, so I don't want to leave him out, that was mailing.
Okay, I do have emails, copies of the emails that went back forth to Scott and I, Scott did all the answering, and the top.
My question, hold on one second.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to send this to John?
I was, that's what I was just wanting to see.
I want him to read this.
Okay, yeah, I just, and that's, John, we're going to, Tim's going to get that sent to you right now.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, Kim, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, he needs to read.
I just can see him over your shoulder, and I don't want to leave him out.
Keep on, I didn't realize you were here, hi. Keep in mind also, three years and one day, he's been collecting rent. Yeah.
Oh, yes.
It's a process, it's two years and a day, we've got the file of the previous year's letters and certified notification. So it's a whole process that we're required to follow by law and.
Well, the other thing about a privately owned mobile home park is that, once we take it, the residents are allowed to repay it off, and we're supposed to notify them, and they can take ownership.
Okay.
And that's an RSA.
And they've been notified, so the board knows.
But they should know that they can, they can take it over as.
After, after the timeframe that's.
Interesting RSA.
That's that's allowed after.
Certain number of days.
That he has expired the time that he can recover his, right. And then it's a co-op.
Then it becomes a co-op, and the residents own it.
I get it.
And they can all chip in and pay the past due or so.
Then they're eligible for grants.
Better than me.
No, actually, I didn't know the co-op, this is fascinating, yeah.
Things, they changed that years ago.
And then they can get grants and things like the other people did to improve it.
Do what they've done, okay, yep, that makes perfect sense.
Do we have the amount, and maybe you have, Scott, you have it, the total amount for the three years that's due?
Yeah, Tim has it.
Yeah, I have, I have it, I was going to give it to you in non-public, but. But you, I can give it to you now.
You're awesome, thank you.
You can say it out loud, it's.
Yeah.
It is public knowledge now.
Yeah, I can explain that sheet if you need it to explain.
Thank you, Kim, for doing your due diligence with this.
You're welcome, no problem.
And by reading this.
Thank you.
That's.
Wow.
Yeah. Well, that's quite the response.
Yeah, I was.
I haven't got it yet.
I'm working on it. Work faster, Tim.
Right.
Work faster, not wiser.
One of the most difficult things.
You got to read it out loud.
Yeah. One of the most difficult things, I think, in in being a selectman, is when you have to take somebody's property away from them. And I know, over the years, it's very rarely, rarely, rarely happened, I think I can only count once.
No, it's more than once.
Twice.
Well, once when somebody lived in it.
And.
Two or three times we've done it.
And because of that, I know, for years, Pat has gone out and knocked on doors.
Right.
And, you know, even whatever it took to try and get in touch with the people, and we've, when people come in here and they have a true hardship, they, we've always worked it out.
Yeah, right.
And I would hope that somebody with a lot of notices like this, which say, I need to get my car and.
Right.
Bring a cancelled check hand carry, I knew I, I would have, so.
Yeah, I had suggested, you know, I said, I don't care, you know, bring it up, it's it's got to be bank, and it's got to be here by three tomorrow, I can't change that. And.
And it's a process.
That's always hard.
I don't like having to do it, but.
It's, it's, I I don't care for it all.
So what's the, what's the total right now?
Uh, Tim has.
All three years?
No, as of today.
Okay.
I'm sorry, as of the 19th, total interest and penalty due to town is 145,085.06.
145.
That's now going to change daily.
Yes.
Well, that that says of September 19th.
Right.
The day after your next meeting.
Yeah.
But yes, it does.
This is only for one year.
That's just, that's just the.
This is one year.
That's 2022, right there. That was working on 2022, which, once it became deeded, it shows paid, but.
So for those of you that don't know, they have to, once we take a deed, they now have to pay all that they owe. Not just the current, not just the.
The deed's not taken, they can catch up on the previous.
Right, well, so.
That's up to us.
That's up to you.
But that's what we've done in the past, that's up to us.
There's a penalty included, we could abate the penalty, but. That's up to us.
We can abate, yeah, we can abate anything, but.
Not inclined with this.
So.
That was with the mortgage holder.
Oh, it was?
That conversation.
Did you get it yet, John?
That conversation was.
Yes, I have it now.
Mortgage holder specifically.
And not the owner?
And not the owner.
Yeah, this, that's.
That right there, it's the mortgage person, that is correct. That is correct.
The honor has been very gracious, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, absolutely, I I I concur, the owner has.
Anyway, what do we need to do?
Nothing right now.
Nothing at this moment. I don't believe.
The interest will continue, the interest and penalty will continue to accrue until the owner comes forward and wants to play, let's make a deal.
My understanding, he does.
But he'll have to come to the board of selectmen.
Right, okay. And do you need, are you interested in a copy of the emails that have taken place, this is starting from this past Tuesday to today between, you don't need that, okay, just check it.
I've been following.
Okay.
Everything.
Perfect, all right.
And just so the board is aware, Mr. Chairman, I have, Kim has her file, and I have one, a duplicate file, so, of conversations back and forth. And I was going to talk to you later on in non-public, but I guess now we're in public, and we've had most of this discussion, so it'll save us, but the owner does want to come in, I did have a little bit of maybe there was some misunderstanding, and made it very clear that I did not have the authority, nor does Kim, to accept the check, which was only for this year's property taxes. We do not have the authority to do that, only this board has the authority to deal with it from this point forward. I have two or now three emails with the owner indicating that, and indicating that the board would be more than welcome to sit and talk to him about this, but that I needed to, I and Kim needed to go over the process with the board so that the board understood their responsibility, not that you don't, I know you do, but that we stayed within the statutory guidelines, and that you you are the only folks who can make any adjustments, only in the penalties, the law only allows you to waive the penalties if you so desire.
Okay.
And he does have to pay all of the back taxes up to date.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, folks.
We appreciate it, Kim.
Appreciate it, Kim, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
All right. Kim, you're up. Okay, so I would, thank you for the time, and I would direct you to my report under your finance tab, and John, you should have it in your email, my report, and also a draft of the budget, the 2026 budget.
Yep, I do.
Before I, before I get started, I just wanted to let you know a couple other things. So we have started on the fall tax activities.
So, uh, we have started on, uh, the fall, uh, tax activities. So I completed the MS 434, uh, which is our estimated revenues through the end of the year. And, um, as well as, uh, I believe the assessor has, um, put in for an extension on the MS1. So, but we are barreling towards, uh, setting a tax rate sometime, uh, late next month. In my report, you'll see, uh, since the last time you saw a status on the bridge grant and activity, I just updated it for the most recent payment that we made for the crane and lift services. And you can see what balances are remaining, uh, for both the amount left on the grant as well as, uh, what we, uh, continue to owe, uh, to the bridge contractor. So that's just an FYI. And as I said before, anytime we have any payments or activity related to, uh, monies for the grant, that I'll update that in my report. The next item, uh, item two is regarding Lexus Nexus Crash Hotspot Cop Logic. So this is, this is an item, uh, that's recommended both by, uh, the chief and myself. And, um, and essentially, uh, this is all, uh, thanks to the work of the administrative assistant at the PD, Charlene Crowell, who did a lot of work in terms of not only attending informational sessions on this product, but also how it would benefit us. And, um, as you may be aware.
Tim, just so you know, uh, none of us have your actual report.
It's in the.
Is it in something else?
It should be underneath the finance tab.
It's the last two pages.
In it?
Yes.
Last two pages?
Well, so this is the.
It was put in.
I kept looking and found it at the end.
Okay, all right, cuz I'm.
What about the beginning?
I must have gone by it.
It was, uh, I guess there was an option.
Tim, now you know why I was confused and I couldn't find my report.
Oh, yeah.
In the book.
Yeah, it's backwards on the second last. Okay.
So in any event.
Paying attention.
Yeah.
Well, and I'm just barreling along over here, you know, uh, I believe you just voted on it anyway.
I pulled it up on my phone.
No, sorry about that. So in any case, um, so this, this product, and, uh, I just want to reiterate again, uh, thanks to, uh, Charlene Crowell at the, the PD. You know, she did the legwork on all this. Uh, but essentially today, this is a, we, we work with this company today from a finance side. Sometimes you'll see 30, 40, $4 checks or $8 checks that will come in and it clogs us up when we're doing deposits. They, uh, they've not had a method for electronic payments before this, but this whole process will, um, once, if approved, will allow them to be our clearinghouse, if you will, for these reports, these accident reports. And will allow us to, uh, capture a lot of information on the accidents. There's tools that, that they provide to agencies that will, uh, map things, that will, uh, give us statistics. And at the same time, um, we can, uh, set the fees more appropriately, which, uh, there's, that's a separate component of this, but, uh, but it allows us to, really become more 21st century, if you will, um, with the accident reports. It'll cut down on the amount of time administratively at the PD. It will reduce the amount of time we spend, uh, administratively in finance on these, uh, deposits. And, uh, and it will provide better and more accurate and up-to-date information for the chief and, uh, the Board of Selectmen as you look at any sort of accident data. And, um, right, and, um, the, the chief is here as well, um, who can, uh, you know, answer questions about it or maybe provide some more information. But we are suggesting that we increase the price of reports to insurance companies to $25 per report and $5 for individuals insured parties, unless they're Tilton resident, which the fee would be free. So, um, and we're, uh, which is in keeping with a number of other towns', um, uh, prices.
So, do we pay them to get this stuff or anything?
No, there's, there's no charge to us.
The other thing I'm wondering, you know, they used to crash statistics on it and crash map. Is this something like they're gonna look at it and say, well, the town's responsible because we've had 50 accidents there and the town needs to widen that road? Because they're, you know, I mean, they're working for the insurance company making it, so.
Well, they're.
Are they gathering that or?
They're a clearinghouse, so they, they're not working for any particular, um, side of the transaction. But what they, what the byproduct for us is that, rather than, uh, us having to sort of collate and analyze and collect that data, uh, they provide tools that allow us to, to very quickly assess those types of things. So that you would have more accurate and more timely data, uh, in a trouble area. But I don't believe it would at all lead to, uh, any additional liability on our part, other than what we have now. Uh, it's just that it would allow us to maybe take action quicker if there was a particular area that was problematic.
What? Why are we exclude, why would we? Not exclude, but privilege Tilton residents is zero for the fee?
Well, because, um, because, uh, one way or the other, they're, they're the taxpayers. So, um, uh, it was just an idea. You know, if they're, if they're paying for the services of the town, uh, through their taxes, that, um, you know, if they're, uh, unfortunately in an accident, that they wouldn't have to pay for their, um, their report.
What if they caused the accident?
How much do you pay now?
Just through their taxes.
No, 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 presently, that's what it would be anything now.
They don't pay anything.
So it's a $5 fee now.
Oh, it is? For a town residence?
For any, any report.
That comes in, if they, they come, if they come to the police department, um, obviously Charlene doesn't, she has to do, she has to redact all these reports. Um, she tries to, you know, after she does the redaction part of it, if she can email, tries to save money that way. That's kind of where everything's going these days. Uh, this, this, this company is great because they'll do all the redaction, you know, Lexus Nexus, Eric, you'll know that. They do all our criminal code books, uh, our Police One, uh, that's what we do. So it's not an, you know, hired by insurance company, actually help. They're innovative and they're trying to make everything a little bit, uh, user-friendly and, uh, for the officers, police departments, things like that. So this was great. I don't know, we talked about it too, even like the QR code. So every officer's gonna have a QR code. And if anybody's not familiar with a QR code, um, you can scan it with your phone. Uh, the officers will have those in their crews and they can actually give that, um, to, uh, whoever was in the accident. And what they do is they take that and they, they scan the QR code and it'll bring them right to this site. They just type in their last name and where they were and it'll actually give them, it'll give them the options for the report. So it's really quick and it takes a lot off Charlene. Now, stuff that comes into the, to the lobby, she's not going to not take them. She's still gonna, it just, uh, it's just an easier way. We've had to deal with state police, Tim can attest to that, uh, with trying to get a police report, uh, it takes a little time. So this is quick. It takes a lot of the, uh, the burden off of, I guess, some of our resources at the police department. Uh, we get a lot of those that come in. We get close to 500 accidents a year, so you gotta remember that. Uh, so it is gonna, it's gonna give back also, uh, $25 and then saving the money for town residents if they come in and get those reports, so.
The, the advantage too, uh, is that the deposits will be made electronically, so we won't be dealing with a massive amount of, uh, small dollar checks throughout the year. And, um, it makes it much more secure, uh, and streamlined.
So some kind of contract that we have to sign for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Agreement.
It's in your book.
Yeah, there's.
Yeah, go through all that stuff and you'll find it. Um, on page two of the contract, it talks about, um, we're gonna collect the fees and we're responsible for sending the fees to them. But I haven't located in here how much those fees will be. Is Lexus Nexus suggesting a price?
Uh, it's, it's what the board sets, so.
So Lexus, if we decide it's gonna be $2 a report, Lexus Nexus, I can't even say that. It's like Peter Piper. Lexus Nexus is going to accept that as their fee.
I would assume they would.
Yes.
Yeah. Whatever we, whatever we put in there.
Because it's certainly gonna be awful costly if they do an onsite support call. Good lord.
I think what they realize is it's just a lot, it's more money for them as a company to try to get all these reports from all these police departments. It's a lot of resources on their end, so they're able to get these reports that come right in from Tilton Police Department and whatever department they have, um, with an agreement. Uh, they, they've realized it's, it's easier for them to be able to get that information out quick to these insurance companies and they don't have to wait, um, the back and forth, so.
Will they talk about it further on page? I guess I should put my glasses on. Page three, fees due to agency. Provided a collector remit to agency, a fee for all reports, agency fee in parentheses, but I can't, I'm surprised that they're not setting a minimum for that agency fee.
Now, that's for us to set.
Disputes, 18% per annum.
Probably the, the biggest issue when I went through this agreement was that, um, and, and this is probably.
Everything.
This is probably the real cost of the agreement, is that it's exclusive to Lexus Nexus. We're not, we're not setting this up with Lexus Nexus and then with another company and another company and another company. Uh, we are, we are using them exclusively as a clearinghouse, uh, which, if you think about it from data collection standpoint, uh, the mapping and all the other tools that they provide, it, it wouldn't make any sense if we were using more than one company.
Who owns the data then?
We do.
So if we decide, hey, we don't want to do Lexus Nexus, we have still valid copies of all those reports?
Oh, yeah.
Yep. And.
Yep.
When obligated, Austin, after two years, you remember how? Exxon's one of the fastest growing stocks in America.
Yeah, yeah.
The most money invested in it. And that's because they collected the stuff and then they start raising your rates for.
Yeah, I mean, if they, they come around to do that, then we'll have to just figure that out the time, but I don't, I don't see that and we will go back to what we, what we have. Because what she does is she'll scan that, uh, those in, so the hard copies are still at the police department. We have all, all those files, um, the extra reports.
We, we scan them for data too, I'm sure.
Yeah, and we actually just, we actually just moved to the e-crash, so we actually have it that way too. So.
Thanks.
So the recommendation was, uh, there is a, a suggested motion, if the board's in agreement, to not only, um, approve the participation in this, uh, but also to authorize the chief to execute the paperwork and to, uh, further increase the price of the reports. And, uh, if you, and of course, if you want to change the cost for a Tilton resident, uh, you'd certainly modify that, that suggested motion if you saw fit.
It's funny, this contract says that, it's an agreement, agrees to be bound by the terms and conditions of this agreement, including those terms and conditions posted on webpages that are specifically set forth herein or contained on any software provider. So this isn't the whole thing, right?
So that refers to the terms and conditions use of their, uh, tools, of their web tools.
Right.
It's, uh.
It's kind of, it's, it's.
You know, and it is.
It leaves it wide open for a lot of stuff here.
So it is a, it is more of a standard. This isn't.
The.
These types of contracts aren't, they're not out of the ordinary.
Right.
The point of the software is to, to streamline the process.
Right. I just, you know, I want to make sure because a lot of times you get into one of these and as we've seen, even with our, uh, GIS stuff and all that, it, it just turned into something that we had to buy everything else and subscribe to in the long run. That was great.
Did I read this correctly? We can terminate this with an 30-day written notice?
Yes.
And it doesn't have to be for cost, just because we feel like it?
Yep. Charlene, I made sure to, Charlene reached out to the other departments. I wanted to make sure that she reached out and, and see how, you know, how it worked and they, they all have good things to say about it, but some of the other questions that were asked directly were, if we don't like it, can we back out and can we just stop? And they, they were, they were good with that. They have no problems with that. So I think they're gonna, we're going, going to see the benefits of it. I don't think there'll be, um, any issues, so.
Do we know any other towns that are currently using this?
Uh, let me see the list.
You should have.
Yeah, there's quite a few.
Nope, I had it here. She gave it to me. It's like Berlin.
Yep.
Henneker, uh, UNH. To look at more. Those are the ones that she has right there. This is, I mean, a fairly new, newer system. I think they're trying to just get more and more people on board or more departments on board, so. Yep. Are you? Yeah.
Ours have, we have a little bit more hoops to jump through because we have other systems as well.
Right. Yeah.
So. Larger agency, there, there's a lot more to it. And I think we're utilizing a little bit more of that system.
Yeah.
Well, I move that we approve participation in Lexus Nexus Crash Hotspot Portal for Accident Reporting Processing in Tilton and authorize the Chief of Police to execute any required paperwork and further to increase the price of reports to insurance companies to $25 per report and $5 for individuals insured parties.
Second.
So I was just looking on page two of, two of the agreements that seem, logic solutions agreement. Number five, terms of termination. Object. The initial term of 36 months, whereas this will automatically renew for additional 12-month periods of the renewal term. And I saw the party at least 90 days. What is that? I just didn't look through the full contract. If you saw that, did anybody see that?
It's quite a contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just asking. That's not 30-day, right?
I don't see where you're looking. I, I did, I have read through this in detail in the past.
So if you look on page two of the order number one. The name on it.
That's, that's not the, that's not the contract itself. That's not the agreement. The agreement is, um, the agreement itself says law enforcement agreement at the very top. And I believe that's about 11 pages.
We're not. It's, it says right here, order number one, sent to this day, uh, between police department and Nexus, Lexus code. Logic Solutions Provider. There's a lot of other.
It's just an example because it says William Madison. Yeah?
That's a scary thing. Uh, may, uh, if I might, I think the termination that you're looking for is on page four, um, four of nine.
We could be signing page two, yeah?
You might want to. Yeah, I, I, I'm just trying to point out, uh, on, on the law enforcement agreement, which is the main agreement. On page four. On page four and section. Section six, uh, two. The termination without any cause or anything else is 90 days, not a 30 day. 30 day is on a breach. But for no breach, we just wanted to say. The other other thing that you're looking at is order number one, the by crash, L N D C.
This is their. Yeah, this is, this is their software.
Right.
Hey, Tim.
Yes.
John's having a little bit of an issue hearing you.
Oh.
Talk a little bit more.
Sure. Well, now how much closer I can get to this. Hopefully you can hear John.
Now I can, Tim. I was breaking up quite a bit.
Oh, okay. All right. Sorry about that. So the, in the main law enforcement agreement on page where it says four of nine, there's nine pages in that in the primary agreement. In six dot two is where it talks about termination. And then if you go to the the one that Selectman Scanlon was referring to, the by crash, that is, I believe that's the software, and this is the software agreement. And you'll see there's there's information in there about training and other things if we wanted to make use of that. So. Let's see.
So I'm, I'm seeing it says term termination that you, we, after, we, it will continue for the initial term of 36 months. And then it will renew automatically for 12 months after that. And we have to give a 90 day notice for that. And then it says the agency fee is, and that's blank.
Yeah. So if you, if you look, it's referring to software throughout that. It's, it's their, it's their proprietary system.
But if we don't, if we say no to the first part after 30 days, John's right. This says we're stuck with the software for three years?
Well, there's, there is no cost to the software. We're bound by their bound by their terms for the software is how I read it.
Right, but right underneath the terms, it says number six, and we're back to fees.
It's.
Which there are none.
It's just blank. It doesn't say zero.
There shall be no fee to agency for the services. Okay. So we get the software for three years and it just kind of hangs there?
Yeah.
Utilize it.
Yeah.
Well, if we decide not to.
Well.
We, we will utilize it. The PD will definitely utilize it. The the thing will be, is it going to fit their needs? And it, if it doesn't fit their needs after the three years, but you also have to remember, this type of software is going to continuously be updated.
Right.
So they're going to be making advancements to it.
And it also may include.
Not on site.
It may include.
It's $2,500.
It may includes, that's for training if you want that. But it may include some DMV data, which I'm sure they have to protect. And, you know, that's why they have additional terms and conditions.
Right.
Yep.
I mean, you're, you're dealing with people's private information.
So there's two contracts to be signed.
Well, we would authorize, I would think, sorry, John, I think we would authorize the chief to sign the, the the one that John brought up. And then we would sign the other one. That one is for.
That's, yeah.
Right? Or is that, or?
I believe.
I already made a motion.
Yeah.
Her motion included.
For him, the chief to sign both.
Sign both contracts?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I'm concerned because what does it say on the contract though for that fee that's blank?
There is no fee.
But can you, can we write zero on there?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, that we should put zero in there, not blank.
Yeah.
Blank means.
Yeah.
The sentence right after that says there is no fee to the agency.
Yep.
Whenever. Yeah, it says when it's not charged. When the fee is not charged, the authorization request. But if we write zero in there.
All right. So we have a motion. We have a second.
Did you read the motion again, please?
Yep.
I move, okay.
Let me read it for you. I move that we approve participation in the Lexis Nexis crash hotspot portable portal for accident report processing in Tilton and authorize the chief of police to execute any required paperwork and further to increase the price of reports to insurance companies to $25 per report and $5 for individuals insured parties.
I'd do that for the public. I have it here. Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to amend that to include that it says zero fees on that.
Yes.
That's a motion so that the motion reads that.
Okay.
Wait one second there.
Second.
Your amendment.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Yep, we need a roll call.
Yep.
Constantino, yes.
Adams, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Now.
No, that's a motion on the amendment. Now the amendment becomes the motion. So now we got to vote for the.
That's right.
The motion now.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Oh, no, it's now you got to vote on the.
Yeah.
Motion.
Now we got to vote on the motion. All in favor?
Constantino, yes.
Adams, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Thank you.
Now you can thank us.
Well, we're bye.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. So now if you turn, turn the page there, you will see information regarding the budget development and where we are with the draft budget. So, so this is the very first draft you're seeing. There's still about 20% of the budget items. When you look through the detail, you're going to see black squares next to certain items, and those are items that we still need more information on. For one thing or another, either rates haven't been set, we haven't received the new insurance rates for next year, you know, that sort of thing. Also, our gas and electric, our contracts are ending that were multi-year before. And I have to work on, I'm working on getting new rates right now so that we'll be prepared before the expiration. So this budget, it shows that it's up 2.8%. It does include one open position in patrol currently and one part-time transfer station attendant at five hours a week. In addition, you'll see as you go through it where in health and welfare, there was one line for the health officer position as to reflect the actions the board took this year in separating health and code enforcement in the budget. They are now two separate lines. So the health officer only portion is listed in the health and welfare department. And the code enforcement is, was moved to the land use department. In addition, as you may or may not be aware, the, the, we have a need for consulting work for our master plan, zoning amendments and a number of other items that, that simply time does not allow for the current land use staff to be able to get to. And they've identified items that they would like to have consultants work with them on. In addition, when going through all of the, the salaries and wages in the budget, it was determined that one of the wages was at a significant discount to current market conditions. And while this, this item E for the coordinator position, this increase would not bring them up to a market rate. It's more reflective of that direction. So it's important to keep in mind that, that at any point in time, we could have a significant budget change because of new personnel. And, and this is just a step towards that direction so that it's not a surprise mid-year, all of a sudden realizing that we are way out of, out of step with the rest of the market. Similar to that, as the board is aware, that in in health and welfare, the human services director position, the hours were changed to reflect the additional workload. And there was an increase in that budget. The town clerk tax collector who sets her own request has requested a 6% increase for this year. This last year, she was at the same merit increase as the rest of the town was originally established. And in addition, the merit that's budgeted with it throughout this budget is at a three and a half percent increase, which equals the police department union contract increase for this year. As I mentioned, electric and gas, all the, the utility lines will have to be requoted based on new contracts. They expire in the first quarter of 2026. And we've been finding that now that the police building is five years old, there are certain systems requiring more more contracts for maintenance that, that we have not had to do up until this point. And those are, those are also budgeted within this budget, but there are some that we still need more information on. So again, it's a 2.8% increase over the 25 budget. If you remove the $84,552 of encumbrances from 2024, in other words, to look at pure taxes raised, it ref, it reflects a 4.2% increase. I was asked by the board previously to keep track of the wages versus non-personnel related items. And with a desire of seeing that the non-personnel related items stayed flat. And I did break that out. So total wages increased by, from 2025 budget to 2026 budget by $182,051 or 7.15%. Taxes and benefits increased $24,866 or 1.92%. But all other items decreased $33,692 or a decrease of 1.41%. So we were able to remain flat for non-personnel related items. So that in a nutshell is the high level view of the budget. You all have a copy which includes line item detail, includes notes underneath the, the lines where appropriate. This reflects our current census of employees. And, and as I mentioned, as you go through it, you'll see that there's, where the black boxes occur, those are estimated basically holdover amounts from 2025 until we have new, new amounts for 2026.
Did you do a revenue projection or?
I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work on that. There are some revenue changes coming. So with the absence of motor vehicle inspections, there's going to be a reduction in the amount municipalities will receive of the registration portion, but it's unclear what percentage that is. I don't think it's going to be a significant percent, but it's still something that we need to try to determine. The, there are some other items that, it, it our, our land use revenues look to be very strong in '26. With the activities that are, are going on, there's just a, a whole new big project discussed this morning that's coming. And as well as all the other projects that are in different, different stages of being built. So I think we're going to still see very strong land use revenues. The police revenues will increase as, you know, with this inclusion of these accident reports by about $10,000 over the prior year. In addition, we'll see higher SRO revenues for this coming year. Outside of that, the I can't say that there's any other really large revenue source that, that we'd be looking at. And one of the concerns that I have in terms of assessing is, you know, the big question is how much is the, the new resort worth and what does that mean on our taxes? And we have known that on its tax card, it shows about a $30 million value. But what was not known was at the time that that was valued, what was the percent complete? And since learned that that was, it's actually 29 million and change, but since discovered that that was considered to be 80% complete at that point. So if you extrapolate, you know, an additional 20%, you're looking at somewhere between 36 and maybe $40 million valuation. Whereas unfortunately, I think there's a common understanding or a common thought that this is a 90 to 100 million dollar project, meaning that it will be taxed at 90 to 100 million dollars, which is not the case for a couple of reasons. But you have to consider all the items that are internal to it as if you were thinking about your house, all your internal furnishings and those things aren't taxed. It's, it's the property and the value of the, the building. So I have talked to the assessor about it and they, at the time that they had assessed this, they didn't have a complete set of plans. They had not had an opportunity to measure the building because of circumstances at the site at the time. So they are going to have that up to date very, very soon. And I'm hopeful that it's going to be more than, more than $40 million. But and, and from standpoint of taxation, I'd say that's the, that's probably the other area where people are probably looking to see that our equalized value is going to increase significantly that would help offset any other budget increases that we've had.
Well, certainly all their docs add value.
Yes. Right. Right.
They must have a number. And you don't have to pull it up for the total value of assessed property in town. And that's probably their.
I, I don't have the new number because we had to, we had to file, there was an issue with the new state's reporting system and avatar software. And the last I knew the assessor, because it was due September 1st, had to file an extension for it, which is, which is not uncommon. And.
All the towns did.
Yeah. So we'll, we will, I'm sure you'll be seeing that probably by your next meeting, we'll have that MS1 and you'll be able to see the total value.
What currently, Tim, we're at like 1.1 billion.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Yep. So. Tim and I, just so the board understands, Tim and I had a lengthy discussion about meeting with the assessor to discuss. You know, I, I think it was presumptuous back when it was set. And I think, you know, obviously this is going to be some changes made, or at least we discussed, we want to talk about those.
Great. Anything else, Tim?
Now, you can, you can see on the, the chart that I put into my report on the, the second page, just the, the high level, which also appears on the first page of the budget. And you can see where those increases and decreases are. And just keeping in mind that some of the increases, while large percentages, they may be a smaller, off of a smaller request to begin with. So. So just, you know, keep that in mind. But it is a overall 173,000. request to begin with. So, so just, you know, keep that in mind. But it is a overall 173,225 increase year over year.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you have anything, John, online? Any questions for Tim or anything?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anybody here, any other questions for him? No? Okay. Thanks, Tim. Appreciate it. All right. Town administrator, you are up.
Okay. I will be relatively brief. I'd like to start with the tax deed stuff that Kim went over with you. Just let the board know that we have an account line set up collecting park rent. That those monies go into this account and they will sit there. And I think I identified that in an email to the chairman. And depending on the outcome of this, that those monies will be returned to the proper owner if that transpires. So and that owner would like to meet with you at your next meeting. And at the time, we'll update the penalties and, and, and taxes and stuff whatsoever. So.
And it'll just be the owner of the property, right? Not the one that holds the mortgage as well?
I assume it just the owner. I've only had discussion with him. I haven't had discussion with anybody else.
Those of interest.
That's right.
So, yeah.
I was asking. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, that's, that's fine. If you want to send it for.
And just, I, I wanted the board to know about the, in case you personally got calls about, you know, the park rent. There was some confusion.
Okay.
We sent registered letters to everybody. I signed them. It's a basic explanation that until they hear further, the monies were to be paid, the park rent was to be paid to the town. I explained in the letter, it would go into that account and the town does not have, use it. It sits there until this matter is resolved.
Okay. Quick question. All the costs for the registered mail and everything?
All going to be added. It's all added to the penalties.
We're capturing everything.
It's not like just one person.
No, we capture everything.
Including my trip in my personal vehicle to, to the register deeds and back. I've got to submit a mileage form, but I explained that to Mr. The owner in my one of several emails that all of these costs got to be recovered because it's not fair to the tilted taxpayer to have to pay for those things. So. And it's statutorily allowed.
We're technically landlords.
Right. Yes.
Yeah.
So I'm the trailer.
Not in the business of being a landlord.
Yeah. I'm the trailer park manager now. So I've had several titles.
Are we going to evict people because they don't pay the rent?
Right.
I mean, are the utilities, do they all pay their own utilities or are the utilities that the park provides?
My understanding is that they all pay their own utilities.
Thank God.
Yeah. Yeah. There are some other issues which need to be addressed. And I've had this discussion with the owner previous to this event. And I told him it is going to need to be cleared up. I think you started that selectman Dawson when you had my health officer title. So. So I'm going to write a book with all the titles that I've earned since I've worked for you guys. So. Anyway, moving on, Academy Street, I will go into detail about a very recent promising discussion I had as a result of an email that I sent that will have a discussion later about that. But I did want to let you know that I did meet with a couple of people from the water district. We have a very positive
Great.
process.
That's good.
I want to give, in my report, I know you saw I did send to you. I did want to give kudos to DPW. If you go by Mechanic Street, all of the cars are gone now. We've begun the cleanup process. We will pick apart that RV, put it in the dumpster and then haul it, have it hauled away. We will have to pay for the tonnage. And then DPW is going to clean up the property. They took two or three truckloads of stuff out of the junk cars. And I would like to thank Rusty's towing. Rusty come down and got all of the cars. When I was there on Sunday, just to check on one of the last cars to be moved, a property owner came out, he and his wife sit out there and a lot and older couple, and they were like very thankful that, you know, they said for years, we've been sitting there looking at all this. And it's looking 100% better already, but the DPW crew did not have to, and I, and I said to him, you know, I wouldn't be picking through this stuff. And Kevin got them hazmat suits and gloves and, and, you know, in case there's needles or whatever in this stuff. But they, they said, no, 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 we, we have no issues doing that. And so I did thank them and I, I will thank them again when it's completely cleaned up. But it, it's making a big difference. Wolf Road, just as.
Hold on a minute. I think that that's above and beyond.
It is.
And I, I really do think the board should be doing something above and beyond for them.
I, I agree.
For the DPW.
I agree.
I really personally think we should be doing that.
Yep.
That is above and beyond.
With your.
Their job description.
With your permission, I'll buy them pizza or something next week, you know, lunch or something. But it, it, and I told him that, and Kevin told him that.
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank them for us.
I, I will thank them for you. So Wolf Road, just as an FYI, they're starting there. I did send the chief a notice. I met with Ever sources representative. They are going to ask for a police detail just to, you know, make sure everything goes good and that stuff. So, and the chief, I gave him the chief's name.
Question.
Yep.
When they do this, our line upgrade, can we have them? We, can we start the process of putting that pin in to straighten out?
I thought they were going to do that anyway.
I haven't heard anything since. So that's why I'm wondering if, if they were planning on. Yes. Basically put that boundary back where it was. And we, I think we talked about having them put a pin in there. So that way, if you got a plow and everything, it's not going to affect it. We can find the pin.
Right.
I mean, we had some conversations about it.
They had to resurvey it though, because the pin in the wall had been removed.
Yeah.
So they have to get that resurfaced.
Yeah. And, and I don't know that we can prove that they did it though. So.
Well.
Do we want to entertain our surveyor to?
They are the ones that moved it.
No, they're the ones that. Yeah.
I thought it was, I thought it was the previous electric company.
Ever source moved it.
Well.
They were in there before.
Well, electric companies, electric company.
Right.
They own the rights to whatever they did.
Our last bits of our conversation.
Okay.
Were that they were going to move, and they were actually going to put a pin in the roadway, which is where that stone wall was.
Okay.
And they just pushed it off the side. Plus, there's some old piping and stuff that looks like crap. And that was from them. And that needs to be taken care of as well. So I figured since they're going to be there, working on it, I might as well do it.
Okay. I'll have that discussion with their representative. So, yep.
They need to fix the mess.
Okay.
And they were okay with that.
Okay.
When we had that last conversation.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I know, I haven't heard from Mr. Wolf or anything like that. So I'm just like, I just know that this is going to come up again. And
Right.
it, it should have been done months ago.
Right.
So, and I know there.
Even if they just put the pin in
Yep.
without putting the stone in the pin, if they put the pin in the ground so that you knew where it is.
That's, yeah. And that's all we need is just the pin because you can't put the stone wall back.
Right.
Because that's in the road.
In the road. Right.
Well, they never should have put the road where they did.
Right.
That's the whole.
That's the whole.
That's the whole.
Right. Because now it's on somebody else's property.
That's right.
Okay.
So if they resurveyed it and put it where it needs to be and put the pin in the ground so that it's flush pin, then they know where the pin is.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Very good. I'll take care of that.
Thanks, Scott.
Yep, you're welcome. I, I did give you a brief discussion about the town property update. And I just want to clarify for selectman Dawson that I did speak with Chuck Bodine, our building inspector, and he concurs. And I did not find his report. I, I, he had indicated to me he wrote one. And I know I have it, but.
I have it too.
I, I haven't, I just didn't have time today with everything going on. So.
Oh, you should have asked me.
But anyway, he concurs that the, the three parcels that are considered non-buildable were Highland Ave because of the wetlands. Ashlot Drive because of the drop off will not meet the setbacks once to, to build because of the drop off. And then Simmons Court, he felt there was a possibility, but it would have to be engineered. So, and basically Greg Pevely said the same thing in his letter that I did send to the board. Just as an FYI. And at your next meeting, if you would like, I could have both Greg Pevely and Dave Kraus, our surveyor, come in and kind of finalize the municipal lot. I did ask him to put the, the two roads on the, on his plot plan and finalize it. So if you would like at the meeting on the 18th, I can have him come, both of them come briefly. And then the board can make a decision what you want to do with the town properties. So.
I think one of the things is that even if it's not buildable, the butter may wish to buy it.
Right.
Increase the lot size.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. And, and that's what Greg said. Just, you know, if, if we ask him to market it, then most likely the first thing you do is go to the butter and say, yeah, exactly. You know, yeah. So.
I have a question.
Yes.
In his letter, I don't understand where, let me put it this way. I've spoken to the Wolf Road butters on other matters. And they have both told me that we do not, the town does not have a legitimate right of way. So I've researched that. I can't, you're all welcome to do your own research. But I cannot find anything in the book. I can't find anything in the road book. And I cannot find anything in either of the parcel files or coming in access off of Laconia Road or Noise Road or Wolf Road.
Did you look at the deed?
Oh, in the deed, Laredo.
I thought I should say remember at this point in my life, but when we were taking that property, I thought there was a right of way from Route 3 or maybe.
This is the one that was donated to us.
By Jerry Shaly. Yeah.
By Jerry.
From Jerry.
But I thought there was a right of way that came from either Noise Road further up or Route 3 down through there.
I can't find anything. So you're welcome to, to go ahead and research with me, but I almost asked Sandy, she was in here yesterday doing cert, researches on cemeteries, but I just finished and determined that I, I spent a couple hours on it. And I.
Would have to be on the deed at some point.
Yeah, I would think.
Somewhere on the deed, yes. I mean, if you go back, you'd have to go back and, and then come forward, you know.
Right.
You know, it's nice.
Three.
It's a nice wildlife refuge. And there's no such thing as landlocked in this.
It's a.
They, you have access to your property.
And I do agree with him that it is a considerable frontage in the front on Silver Lake in probable building sites, but it's in the back where it's wetlands. Up towards the, where the ever source is going through.
Yeah.
Yep. So it has frontage on Silver Lake.
Oh, a lot of frontage.
A lot of. And the property shows it going out to the road.
Correct.
But there's the local residents say we don't have access to that.
Well, it shows it. It shows a budding going up to the ever source portion of it. It shows it, but the two abutters, one has a right of way through one abutter. There's no right of way to it.
Dave Kraus come in next week or, or next meeting?
18.
Maybe we can grab the deeds and say, hey, what do you think? While he's here. He didn't see this, right?
Yeah.
I just.
He's already here.
I'd really appreciate, I'd really appreciate a second eyes on it because, you know, I'm not an expert on it. Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
We can ask Sandy to take a look at them.
He's real good with the boundaries.
Yeah. Very good.
Thing.
Just don't want to end up paying for it. That's.
That's what everybody asks. Oh, by the way, take a look at this.
Bravies. Right. And the last thing, Mr. Chairman for me is trunk a treat. I did send you a copy or I do have a copy if I didn't send it to you of an email sent by the lady that puts it together, Deidra. And she had asked, right now, we conclude that event at 5:30. She felt that it would really better serve the kids and the community to conclude, conclude it by five.
Yeah. And the chief brought it up and I think we had talked about that.
We agree.
At 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock because it was too late going to 5:30.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
What time are we starting?
3. We'll close at by 2:30, by 3 o'clock.
Right.
We'll start 3 to 5.
Yeah.
Because at like 5:15 or 5:10, there's 15 people on the road. We've got this whole road blocked off Main Street. So.
Yeah.
I so agree with you, but last year we had almost 400 kids. And in two hours' time for them to walk around the businesses and try to rally those kids to get down to T-Hop for a parade up.
Never works.
It's like herd and cats.
It's like.
They're all excited.
It's like herding ants. Trust me.
And about 5 o'clock, 5:05.
I was out there at 5 last year.
Me with the bullhorn. It couldn't work.
No, in the very beginning, you're right. But after about 5 o'clock, you kind of look at each other like, well, we opened the road, but it said at 5:30. So it stayed.
So is that enough time, 3 to 5, or should it be 2:30 to 5?
No, I think 3, I really, 2 hours. I know. I know. I mean, the road is closed at 2:30. If you wanted to push it back, but the road is closed, I put it in for 2:30. But that gives us time to get everybody off the main street and get, give us time to put our codes and have everybody set up. DPW set up on each end. But if you wanted to start something else, you know, after 2:30, we will have the road shut down at 2:30. That's why I put the permit in from the state.
We'll just start the parade early. That's all.
So what happens when, when, so right now it's 5:30. So what happens at 5:30 to close it? I mean, you open the road?
Yeah, 5:30 we open it, but.
So if we switch it back to 5, at 5 o'clock, you open the road?
Yeah, 5 o'clock. So then when I put, yeah, when I put that permit out, it'll be before it was to 5:30. And every time, and I know we're talking, DeeDee, we had talked about this. And I think last year I just spaced it. And when I put the permit in, went to 5:30 again. And we both looked at each other like, yep, it's a little too late. So 5 o'clock, I think is a good time. 2:30 and that gives us enough time to shut the road down, do what we need to do. By 3 o'clock, when everybody's showing up and things like that. So.
So even if you didn't have an official, okay, you're going to close this at 5:30. If there was no activity and nobody's going around, couldn't you open the road at 5:10?
You could, but the problem is, is you don't know if there's other people that might show up at that time or, you know.
Yeah. Because you've announced it already.
You've announced it.
On the radio.
Yep.
Fred Caruso's there at that time.
And if some.
I didn't realize people would come for the tail end of, after the parade and after the judging and after the actor. I didn't realize.
Yeah, I mean, they.
Functions.
Yeah. They start to break down and some of the people that do stay there till 5:30, but if they know it's 5 o'clock, they'll start breaking down just a little bit before that and will get completely off the road at that time. So.
Is, is the opposite true? If there was still a little bit of activity, could you wait till 5:10 to open the road?
If we asked to, to close till 5, stay till 5:10? Stay till 5:10? I mean, could we pull the cones and slowly get out of the way and open the road? Yeah, you'd probably do that, but.
I mean, if there's still kids hanging around, then you haven't scooted them out of the road.
No, I mean, you could, but I, but again, I, I, we kind of know at that point, the, the sun is setting. It, it gets darker. Um, and I think we've done, this is what, that third or fourth year that I've been involved with being down there. Um, and I'm there to the very, very end. I mean, we're picking up the cones and doing everything. So I, I have a good, um, you know, a good feeling.
Usually everybody goes home by 5. And, and he's right, everybody usually goes home at 5.
Yeah, mostly there's the cars.
Run.
Yeah.
It used to go much longer.
And hey, if this year they, for some reason, want to stay till 5:15 and we close it and there's a lot going on, then next year I'll put the permit out for 5:15 or 5:30. Just kind of work with how it goes, you know? So.
I hope, just hope it's not 500 people this year.
Mr. Chairman and, and members of the board, I'll communicate that to Dee Dee or Deidra.
Yeah, please. Thank you.
Dee Dee, okay.
Alright, anything else?
Nope.
There was one other thing. Um, I think last week I had called Scott because.
Oh, yeah.
Up by, um, just up towards the outlet malls through there, they were cutting brush. They had the tractor with the thing, cutting all the brush back. And I saw them going this way and then I, I came down and they skipped over all of our stuff.
Right.
Then they moved on. I told Scott.
And I called District 3.
On the phone.
Yeah. 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 And they were, they were here the next day. They mowed it all, uh, by Cumberland's and that stuff. It looks great. So, yep. Yep.
Made them come back.
Yep.
Or asked them to come back.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, John.
Good, yeah.
No, I spoke to Mark. Mark was very good, so.
Yeah. I thank him for that. It looks beautiful.
Yep, it does.
See the river in, in rain time for the foliage.
And I told him, I, I had spoke to somebody in the fire department. They kind of like to be able to see, you know, when that brush is down, they can see the kayakers in the water that way if there's an event. So, you know, I shared that with them. So.
Right. Great.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And the, and the, and I told him, "You guys want to watch the railroad tracks."
Alright. Moving along.
Hey.
Uh, Selectman reports. Selectman Dawson, you are up.
Uh-huh. Okay, um, how are we doing with the FEMA mapping?
Um, I've got, I've been trading calls with Michelle, somebody, uh, that.
Jackson.
Jackson, that Sandy, uh, Sandy Plez- Pleznar got me. Uh, and we, I think I owe her a call now. And then I, I asked Dave Krausy at the same time if that's, uh, something that he could, um, a- address because the wo- the appeal dictates that you have to forward your argument in the GIS format. So in other words, you've got to do longitudinal and latitudinal, um, argument in your explanation. So, and that's a little beyond my, my expertise. So I, I thought, I had emailed Dave and Dave had given me a call and said, uh, he thought he might be able to do that, uh, as well. But, um, Michelle left a message that she was a little rusty, I think is the word, term she used. A little rusty, but she would be willing to look at it for us. So I hope to work on that next week. I've been, uh, trail.
Dave Krausy aware that there's a, uh, deadline?
Yes. Yeah, I told, October 14th is the deadline. So.
That's a good point.
Yeah. So.
I like him.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay.
So.
Um, a Business Park Drive presentation, that culvert concerns me. Because if the state is draining their ditches into that culvert, and they did do that, they, they did a ditch project, what is it, five or six years ago?
Remembered a pretty big cutback.
It was pretty, pretty in-depth.
It, it was there, right? In that section?
I don't know if that, I don't believe that's our culvert. Why would we put that there?
Yeah, I don't think that.
I don't believe.
Doesn't service us.
Put that there.
Wasn't that Midway?
Yeah, Midway went through there, put that water line. Did they, did they go under the road? I remember doing a detail out there. Midway came around and went up Business Park Drive. Remember they ripped the end of that road up?
Right. But I mean, the town of Tiltons did not install that culvert. Could we verify that?
Yeah. Yes. Well, I'll ask the.
Cause it is in there right away too, according to that map, yeah.
Well.
Great, it's on the line.
It's pretty close.
Almost like a boundary.
But he said that DOT said it was our pipe. I mean, and I, yeah, I, thank you. And then how are we doing with the lighted crosswalk signs? We're over a year out.
Yeah.
1000.
Yeah. Kevin, I have Kevin working on that. Uh, Kevin's got the specs. I think he's going to finish the sidewalks before, uh, down at Riverfront Park in the granite. He's going to replace the granite down there and pave the sidewalk before he starts on the, uh, lighted crosswalk signs.
So it's my understanding if we use those signs on town roads, we don't have to change them.
On town roads, that's correct.
Do we know if the state's going to allow us to use them on their roads, even if we do change them?
Yes. Yes. They already assured us they won't.
Yeah, we, yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Only in the locations that they will allow us to.
That's correct.
Yep.
And how many of locations are there? There's no crosswalk at Riverfront Parks. They're not gonna let us use it up there.
Um, why, why couldn't we put a crosswalk at Riverfront Park?
Well, when we were developing it, they said absolutely not. And through the years when we've asked them, they said absolutely not.
But we can, we have put them in anyway a couple times. T-Hops.
T-Hops, yeah.
But we, but we could, what about like, not at Riverfront Park, but like at the end of Winter Street?
You mean crossing?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Kids do not.
That's, that's.
Hey, do not look.
No, and that is their road.
Christmas.
Went to Street Estate.
I can, I can ask again.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah, it's scary.
There, there was, uh.
It would be nice if we had preapproval.
Right.
And we haven't decided where to put them as a board. We've talked about a lot of places. I mean, one of them is to cross over to the bridge.
Yeah.
Was a place. But they're not gonna let us put them anywhere on Main Street.
Downtown, no, no, we can.
Directly, right over here would be a great place by the draw.
Right.
That's a long, long one. But they're not gonna let us put it there.
I can't, they put one there then. If they won't allow us to put one.
Or the old PD, you know, the one that we discussed many times.
But there's no crosswalk there.
No, there's, there's a break on one side of the, and a break on the other with the sign that says that's where the trail goes. But there's no crosswalk.
Well, Deer Street, uh, was one, um, that had been discussed.
Is that busy enough to put one there?
Well, across, uh, Route 3, um, to the other side, you know, school kids.
Well, the crosswalks, I don't believe it goes across Route 3. Doesn't it go across Deer Street? And the other.
And the cemetery also.
Yeah.
There's one across the cemetery, but I don't think there's one that goes across Route 3, is there?
Uh, yes, I believe so. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's a crosswalk that goes across.
That was one of the.
Street, right at the, almost right at the inner.
Right.
The cemetery entrance.
And i- in that one, we had that, uh, the old folks home.
Yep.
And.
Really?
And, um, the island, we have tentative approval on those three.
And.
You got approval, approval?
Uh, we can, we can.
Can we make a formal request?
Yeah, we can as soon as we've got the signs meeting their standards.
I do think.
Why do we have to wait? If we, if we know they're gonna have to meet their standards, couldn't we ask for approval for these signs that meet their standards?
Well, I can ask. Yeah. Yeah, I can ask.
And, um.
We might as well ask now because that way, that, that way, if we get the approval and we get them done, we can just put them in.
Go right in.
Right.
I mean, I'm gonna use the W word. Winter is upon us soon.
Oh, I know.
I know. I know.
Well, there, I can tell you that the last, uh, discussions on Riverfront, uh, having some kind of, uh, crosswalk along there, uh, they were requiring advanced signs, um, over the hill as you're going east. So it wasn't that they were against it. And in fact, I think, uh, back at the time, we spent some ARPA money with Keach to look at, um, uh, to look at the site distance or something else along there. So they weren't necessarily completely opposed to it, but it was going to require more than just a crosswalk and a sign. So there was more cost associated with it.
When they wanted us to put a crosswalk down at Salmon Run? Hundred twenty-five thousand?
Yeah.
They want.
That was a light. They, that was lights.
Full traffic light.
Lights.
They wanted lights at the time.
So I suspect if they're gonna allow us to put a sidewalk in up at Riverfront, and that was how many years ago? We're probably looking at closer to 200,000.
Right.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Hmm.
Well, the town doesn't have that to put a crosswalk in.
The last quote, uh, was in, in about 50,000, 50 to 55,000, based upon the signage and other things that were determined at the time. So that.
For Riverfront.
For Riverfront. And that was when we were looking at using the ARPA monies, uh, for that project.
That's interesting that it would be less requirements than what they were gonna have us do at Salmon Run.
Right. They wanted, uh, the whole light.
Oh, yes.
System with the overhead, everything.
I was down there and had that conversation with them.
Yeah, this is, this is not the same kind of, uh, thing. So.
Interesting. Okay.
The light that we've got had is what they would want at Riverfront. Because that's giving you that notice coming up over the hill.
Mm-hmm.
And you would see those when they hit the button. It would flash. I think.
Well, the interesting thing is, is our Christmas event, which is one of the bigger events we have there, is at night.
Yeah, I know.
And you know.
Moving the park, all of our moving the parks right now.
It's always better to have people walk across the street in one place rather than twenty or thirty.
Yeah.
Alright, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
Maybe, um, at our next meeting, we can pin down as a board of selectmen and say, "We'd like a sign, signs here, here, here and there."
Yeah, we definitely should. We should.
And maybe the chief can offer suggestions of our own streets that may be a problem where they would do some good.
How many signs again do we have?
Five.
Five?
Four, excuse me.
I thought there were eight signs, four sets.
Four.
Four sets.
Yes.
Eight sets.
Right.
Four sets.
Eight signs.
Eight all together.
Yeah.
So four crosswalks.
Yep, so four crosswalks.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
Cause you're gonna have one in each.
Narrowed down, right? Four crosswalks, alright.
Yeah, we, I, I, I thought the last meeting, the board had agreed.
We did.
On, uh.
Island.
Island.
We, that's one we have agreed.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree with that one.
And Winter Squam High School, um.
High School.
We just talked about it.
380 West Main.
But we didn't agree.
Yeah, I thought we agreed.
That's three.
You made those suggestions.
I threw out.
I thought we picked those.
I threw out like five or six in that suggestion.
Yeah, but then we narrowed it down.
Four. So.
So we still have one left, one set left. If we do those three.
I think you brought up a good point though. Sorry, John, I keep forgetting to talk. And I think you brought up a good point though, like the high school was one we definitely should do.
Yeah.
They got them across Route 3, yeah.
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 Yeah. The Island Park.
And now I'm here in Winter Street. That's a good one.
Winter Street, I definitely think we should put one. I, I, I don't know how many times I, I see kids walking up the hill and they don't look over their shoulder.
No.
And then you've got people that are trying to shoot off onto Winter Street. So I think that, in my opinion, I think that should definitely be one. It's scary there.
John, John?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's three.
The island.
I, I already said that.
That's, that's a third.
380?
Yep, 380 would be good. Right across, we already have a crosswalk there.
Okay.
The Park Street Cemetery or the school there. And then save the last one for the talks with the state or whoever for the Park, uh, the Riverfront.
We have one set to place.
No, you have four.
No, we've already set three of them.
We already set three. So we said the island, bridge, the high school.
Yep, 380.
Uh, Winter Street.
Yep, Winter Street, 380.
And 380. So that's four sets.
But 380 is across their driveway. It doesn't go across Route 3, right?
Yeah, it goes across Route 3.
But couldn't they go down and use the crosswalk that's, that's for the high school?
Use it for 380 so that when they.
I mean, that crosswalk can't be too far.
Why would they want to use the crosswalk except the one at the high school? Because the other way, they would be going the Black Swan Inn, which would be on the same side of the road.
Because there's no crosswalk to get them, um, to Main Street.
Yeah, there's no crosswalk from, uh, it's on the, it's on the other side of the road.
Now, the crosswalk stops.
Yeah. Yeah.
You can't go on the south side or riverside from the high school. You can't go all the way to Main Street on a crosswalk. You run out of crosswalk.
Right.
On the same side, the opposite side.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you're gonna, you have to cross over.
Yep. Yeah, that's right.
You can't use the one that comes off of Mill Street because that's not town. That's private.
Oh, yeah. That one's private?
The one that, it belongs to Gymcropsy, that's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's right.
Behind and comes out in Riverfront. Although you could cross through Riverfront. Except in the winter.
Yeah. I think those four spots, I mean, just my own personal opinion. Are you good with that? Are we good?
I think the one at, at, um, 280, I don't know.
Really?
There's, yeah, 380, I'm sorry. Um.
Okay.
Be used that much.
Alright, so we have three narrowed down and then we'll come back or.
And if we.
Email if we have a fourth.
We need it, then we'll use it.
Yeah.
You gotta put them together anyway.
Right.
We got time. We got time.
Oh, and you have to remember, you have that whole other side of town.
Right.
Maybe the chief could come back with some suggestions where this-
380 I like because it is a spacicle area right there.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of lighting, you know, the streetlights, it's, if you, if you go through it, it's narrow, and then you come around that, that corner, and if somebody's right in that road, and it's a high sidewalk also.
Right.
And why don't we all look at it?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll look at it.
Let's all look at it.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright. Anything else, Catherine?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Selectman Constantino, you are up.
Okay, I have a list. Uh, the people that are, I think it's Tilton Historical Society, I'm sorry, that are, uh, doing, um, researching information on cemeteries, have asked if the town could, it, supply a name for the cemetery, put a name up on the cemetery. They don't have names on the cemeteries, so-
Well-
Whether it be Lancaster Hill Cemetery or Park Street Cemetery, whatever, and Park does have the name on it, but there's no name on it, so if you said to DPW, um, such and such cemetery was damaged or whatever, you can't say that because you don't know the name of the cemetery.
Well, Grange Road Cemetery, the one on Pest House Cemetery.
Pest House? The one that's right next to, uh, Elsie's Old Place, um.
What's the name of it?
Right, I can't remember.
Okay, so what's wrong with-
Two Philbrook.
What's wrong with having them just put a little sign up? Make a sign and paint it white, like the picket fence, and just say the name of the cemetery?
Well, I'm just wondering why after a hundred years or so, some of them are more than a hundred years. Why do they have to have names?
Because they'd like to know the history.
They'd like to know. We all know where Ernie's is, lot, but nobody coming into town doesn't know that.
Right, it's a new generation coming up.
Make sure that we mark.
You know, like you mark a cemetery.
I'm fine with it.
I think it's just more maintenance that we don't need. And then, you know, we have to remember that, um, these were family cemeteries.
They are, they are, yeah.
So, before we go naming them, we better think about-
I'm not asking you to name them, I'm asking you to just put the name of them up, the ones we know, to put the wood up.
They've never had names.
Some of them have.
Not if-
I mean, you've got-
We just call them names.
I can ask, uh, I, I can ask Tom about the one on Pest House and the one next to, uh, right across from Dana's. Because there's no-
I mean, you could look in Reynolds and see what they were called.
I mean, I don't know, just Kim have a-
Look, Reynolds just-
Does Kim have a list of, of the ones that, that she knows that they're, they're the name of the cemetery?
If you're looking Reynolds?
I don't know, I don't-
Reynolds is the history.
I, I get that.
There was that, there's a whole section on the town.
And so, when we're getting gone, are you gonna leave a note, looking Reynolds for the name? I'm telling you, looking Reynolds for the name.
With it once I find out the name.
Well, the selectmen know, and they'll decide whether that's yes or no.
Oh, do you want me to do the work?
Well, I'll do the work, I have Reynolds.
Alright. Ask, I'm just gonna say it as a no, I'm not gonna-
I'll be glad to look through Reynolds.
What, where, where do you-
Way too much work for me.
They volunteered to make, maybe they were volunteering to make some wooden signs.
They, they, they just like them to be up, so that, you know.
We're not just-
Apparently, they-
You just don't take-
Apparently, they've asked people-
My family owns one of these cemeteries, we took a deed to it, we own it. I sure as heck don't want somebody naming it. There are survive, family survivors to these cemeteries.
I do not believe they want to, us to name the cemetery. I believe they want to go through the history, and if it is named, mark it as that. That's what they want to do.
Not without the board of selectmen's permission.
They can do the work and get some-
They're asking, this is what-
They can do the work, but they can come back to us.
This is why they asked me to come back and-
Well, like I said, when they do research, they better, don't try to name my cemetery.
They're not trying to name a cemetery.
That cemetery will have-
They're trying to-
What I'm trying to tell you is that cemetery is in Reynolds and it will have a name. But now my family owns it.
But the names are not at the cemeteries, that they want to put like a plaque of some sort at the cemetery with that name that's in Reynolds.
What if the families that are still alive don't want that name on that cemetery?
I assume they would ask the, these families before they would do anything.
Thank you, John.
Okay.
But that's a lot more research.
They can do some research for us and then, um, come back to us with what they found.
Uh, like I said, I, I'll check with Tom.
I'll, I'll just ask Tilton Historical Society, watch this tape and gather from what they really, because I can't even figure out what, what to even tell them right now. Thank you for listening, let's move on. Trail Association wants to put up a banner for their annual, um, whatever you call it, meeting. Wow, the trail.
Taste of the Trails or something?
Taste of the Trail or something, they want to put up the banner on the, uh-
On the bridge that's on there?
Right. Right.
So where do they want to put it?
Well, on the railing.
Yeah.
Just before, on the corner where you, where they put it, or on the, by river, by the river.
Oh, on the-
Wherever they usually put it.
Fence along the river.
Usually, I think it goes by the river.
I'm fine with that.
I don't have any objection.
Everybody have a problem with that?
Nope.
Nope, as long as they maintain it.
You're good, John?
Sometimes it gets-
I'm good. Okay.
Okay. Um, there is a new project in town, uh, the Irving and the space be, next to Irving, which they own, the old mobile station that's vacant, is gonna have a new redevelopment. Um-
Where is this?
The Irving Station.
Oh, the Irving Station, okay.
And next to its blank. Um-
Oh.
They're gonna redevelop and, and come in on, in and out one, um, off of Route 3, but in an ingress and egress, uh, from Sanborn Road for their tractor trailers, redeveloping the entire, uh, I thought I, look at that, is that, uh, no, that's your, I thought I left a copy on, on the desk there.
Oh, that's cool.
On the table. DOT did not come to the meeting because they're having their own meeting with them. Um, they're very concerned, and this is a concern, um, they're concerned with Business Park Drive Traffic Study, and they had no idea of the Business Park Drive project.
Mm-hmm.
And this project going on, com- combination of the two. It's traffic wise, you're having tractor trailers and tractor trailers onto Sanborn Road. But more importantly, if you can just give me one second, I want to pass this around, just give me one second, I, I need to pass this around because we're talking about cemetery.
It's an important selectment thing. That they'd be concerned about volume on 132, when the volume on Route 31 will certainly has to exceed that.
It, I guess it probably has to do with the fact that it's so close, the exit from their driveway.
The intersection.
They put it back because it's an island by Walgreens.
Yeah.
Right.
So how much traffic can you back up without-
Right.
People pulling across, blocking light.
If you try to pull out of Irving now, busy weekend or holiday.
You can only turn right.
Yeah, I mean, just go right.
Yeah, you can't.
Okay, John, can you hear me?
Yeah.
That was funny.
I hear you.
Um, Tim's trying to send, you can put that up on the screen, I think. No, this is the new plan, so, um, at, uh, at the meeting today, up in this area, right in this area, very close, is where the two, um, headstones were found year, a few years back.
Those headstones were found on-
In the woods, this is where it's gonna-
This is the woods right here.
Behind old mobile station.
This is the mobile station here.
The two headstones that I have, were not found there.
There are two in there.
There's two in there now.
Yep.
There are two, and they're in the trees, we don't know how many more are in there.
Are they in the ground?
Oh, they're in the ground.
And they're in the ground.
Or are they just discarded there?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we'll find out, they will find out.
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Oh.
They're aware of it.
Yep.
Today.
But they can't go digging within certain-
They are aware of it today. Um-
Is it right behind the, um?
So, this is the new portion of it.
Here's, yeah, here's Route 3, here's Sanborn Road, here is actually anger.
Yeah.
This thing, turning the camera now, okay? These are the, these are the pumps as you pull down here, and they're actually, this is where they're gonna use it, these are on Sanborn Road. So, yeah, it looks totally different, so yeah. So here is, it'll be like this, they're looking from the back, but here's the mobile station, here's the Irving. You can see the corner, this corner is this corner. Right here.
We're gonna be a little-
Little thing, it says right on there, and I've always heard the stories. Concrete, it says, um, headstones.
Right there.
Two rising headstones right there, in the trees. And I think it's, it's always been said in our law enforcement that there were many found in here, I assume, yeah, so.
I heard that story.
Here, yeah. Like, as possible as-
Yeah.
So.
Right.
So, well, I thought maybe you would know something about that, but I guess not.
I'd have to ask my dad.
Yeah. I think-
Or look in Reynolds. I wonder if the diocese knows anything about it.
We'd be smart to walk out there. No, this is a proposal, this is-
No, because it's right here.
Well, they can't do that. Well, they don't, I mean, they know, I think they have-
Well, there's a process that they have to go through to remove them.
This is what I'm saying.
But it's quite a process.
This, John, take a look at this, here's the point, add, put that on there, and now where are you?
I measured with the scale today, and it came out 160 feet from that proposed, and it went, it went right where my, mine shows, that corner is gonna actually-
Do we know the names on the stones?
Oh, I could probably go up there and look, though.
Definitely want to.
Yeah, I think we should probably look.
That would, that would be helpful.
Yeah. Maybe, a lot of times, they, at some point, they had a fence out there. Might be a fine-
Alright, I'll text you.
Okay, yeah.
Wow.
I'll go with the chief tomorrow.
What your office has to deal with, I'm sorry. And I'm not laughing because it's funny, it's just-
They, they are aware of that, they are aware of the law. They, um, I want the selectmen to be aware, aware of that. Project we can handle, I'm not, I'm not pointing it out because of the project I'm putting out as a selectman, because that is extremely close to a graveyard.
Yeah.
Or in-
Right.
There's also they have to give public notice, stuff like that, if they want to do any type of work around graveyard.
Yep.
And other things.
Well, they have to stay 20 feet away.
25, yeah.
They also have to notify, but they don't know where it is, so.
They don't know what the boundary is.
Didn't, didn't, didn't know it was on the map.
Yeah.
They didn't know it was on there? Oops.
Well, an engineer, you have to understand, they hire engineers to do this and present it, and so, I mean, you know, it's different.
Now they know, at least they know now, and they didn't just start working.
Right.
And go, oh, boy.
Okay, so, that's that. The, uh, got a letter from Shanna that was directed to, um, Chair Adams, that Jane Alden's, uh, Lakes Region Planning is uh, expires November, do we want her to go from November 2025 to November of 2029? For Lakes Region Planning, she's willing to do that, God willing, she's-
She's willing to do that?
Yes.
Alrighty then.
And she has been showing up, Adam.
Oh, yeah, she has.
Yes, she does agree, Jane.
We have one coming up.
Alright, so I make a motion that we appoint Jane Alden from November 3rd, 2025 to November 3rd, 2029 for Lakes Region Planning-
God bless her.
Commissioner, representing Tilton.
I'll second. All in favor?
Alright.
Uh, Constantino, yes.
You gotta let it finish and then we'll do it. Adams, yes.
You said, all in favor.
Dawson, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, speed bump up on Pillsbury.
Alright.
Not gonna be a very pleasant person to talk to, I, I don't like them, I don't like that there's two. I think it's overkill. In the past, as a select board, we have always asked for a petition from the neighbors, um, and then have the chief go out and either put the trailer up or, or answer the question, is it necessary? We didn't get that, we just, Tilton School asked and we delivered. Not only did we deliver, we delivered twice. And it's, you can barely, on the first one, get up to speed, and then you got a second one, and it's right at the end where you have to stop anyway. I don't get it, I just don't get it, and I don't like it, I, I just think that every one of our selectmen should go up and take a look at where they're placed, how they're placed, and I think it's overkill, that's my opinion.
Yeah, can, can I add on to that?
Three phone calls complaining about that.
Yep, so I'm gonna give, uh, my two cents. I've almost been hit multiple times there, my daughter has been hit, almost hit multiple times there. I can count, I can't even count on the number of times that I've seen cars go flying past kids that were in the crosswalk. Matter of fact, a girl almost got hit the other day when a motorcycle went around that. She was trying to cross on the crosswalk, and the motorcycle literally almost hit her. She dropped her bag and, and jumped because she almost got hit, I watched the whole thing. So, I understand people are inconvenienced, and, uh, and I'm sorry, uh, but I will say that if people learned how to drive and didn't think that they were, uh, above the law when it comes to how fast you can drive, then we probably wouldn't need those things. But we're not catering to the fact of it's Tilton School, we're catering to the fact that it's kids that are crossing the road with multiple times a day.
We've turned other, we've turned other streets down because we felt it wasn't necessary.
Mm-hmm.
And we have them on other streets.
This is a school zone, too.
I get that it's a school zone, and I, and I appreciate the fact that there's people coming across the, uh, across from a, uh, sports event there, I get that. And one is fine, I get that, but two, it's, you're, you're, it's right across from a residential person. It's not across from a sports event, it's across from a residential portion. Okay, so that second one, I, I can't-
Aren't those removed in the first part of November?
They are. Yep.
So, that road will not have any speed bumps on it?
Mm-hmm, come November.
Unless we have them put back on next spring.
In the spring.
And the other fact is, we probably, people probably wouldn't feel so angst to fly on that road if we got Academy Street fixed, they probably wouldn't use it that much.
And, and we didn't follow protocol.
We didn't follow protocol, I- Why two? Why are there two speed bumps on that road? Is that what we voted to do, is put two speed bumps on?
No, I, we voted on one.
I don't know why there's-
They asked for a speed bump, we, we said yes to a speed bump, we ended up with two.
I don't know why we put two up.
Look, look, I think the chief can explain it clearly.
Probably not gonna be the, uh, most liked person after this, just like Pat said. Um, I think it was done by protocol, I think it was, it was addressed, um, you know, it was asked, and they came to the chief of police and asked what, what my thoughts were. Um, I gave my thoughts, obviously, back in the day, I used to live on Daniel. Um, when, when there was no field across from the school, maybe that's okay, but you have a sports, you have a field, you have tennis courts, people are going across, and they're kids. Also, further down the road, when we had gone on site with, with Scott and with Kevin, um, we noticed, you come up over the hill, and, and that's a perfect spot for the speed bump. Um, looking down the road, you can see, and it's, it was a weird placement where to put those speed bumps, because you have a lot of, um, kind of like bump outs, like parking on the, on the, on those, you have to do on the choke points, and that's when Kevin made that, that point. And you could see after the first one, and that's usually what happens, you hit that first bump and you, and you, and you, and you, and you you want to catch up to speed and you want to get to the stop sign. Well, that's a good stretch, so to slow them down. Now, coming off of School Street and you turn onto Pillsbury, it, it's, it slows you down right there, but then now you're not gonna speed to the next one, it's, you know there's another one coming, so you're gonna keep that speed low. Um, you have all the dorms right there, so that's why we thought also on that further end, um, across from, um, Howard's, uh, at the end of Pillsbury, and you have those, the dorm, the dorms have always been there, but they're going to and from their vehicles also. And I know that they have kids at that last house also, um, so I, I, I think it was maybe not done in the way that we're used to, usually on a typical road, um, yes, they will notify, the board will notify me as the chief, or someone will send me an email, I'll, I'll inform the board, and then we'll put the sign or the mess, uh, not the sign, but the speed trailer out. That's a little different. You have vehicles on just, this is a school zone. So you're gonna have more pedestrian traffic than you would on a regular street is what it was. And usually, yes, we would put the, the speed trailer out. We would get that, the speeds, and then we would put it out to, you know, the, the data out to the board and go from there. I think this one was just a little bit different. And I don't feel it was because of the school as in Tilton Prep. I, I feel that it was, it was asked by the, by the board for me to go out there and check it out with DPW, and that's what we did.
I just, thank you, Chief. I find it interesting when you have people in town that will complain about those things, but yet, and it's the preppy whatever school that they make those comments. But yet, those same residents are probably the ones that utilize the sledding hill. They participate in different things that maybe the Tilton School helped put together. Or they go to maybe some of the games, like I don't understand that if it's, that it's that much of a concern that you would write an email or, and make comments about something that is literally a hundred yards, that you're still gonna be able to go 20 miles an hour even though you're going to the speed bump. So it doesn't, I find that very interesting.
I, I totally disagree with you on that one, Eric, because it has nothing to do with Tilton School. We tried to get, we tried to get two speed bumps on Cedar Street where all of the kids from Wintisquam cut over from Cedar Street down High Street and then down over to Prospect to the lights to get out.
And I would want, yeah.
We could not do that with the Board of Selectmen because nobody said, no. They said, no.
I wasn't on the board then.
Well, good. So I'm trying to tell you that this was not the right, it was.
If we wanted to try to revisit that, you'd probably get a different.
We have small children on Cedar Street. We have painted sidewalks on Cedar Street. We have cars parking in the painted sidewalks on Cedar Street with little kids coming in and out of those painted sidewalks with cars parked in the, in those. And then we have cars speeding and they don't care whether the speed bumps there or not. They don't care. That's where we should have two and we don't.
Well, let's remember the Board of Selectmen didn't vote to put in two.
No, they didn't.
Right.
Somebody made that decision without us.
I think if we could, if we could give everybody the same amount of opportunities so we all participate in this meeting, I'd really appreciate that.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah. So I hate speed bumps. I always hated them. But I look at that road that's being as a cut through. And that's a cut through because the Academy Street is blocked off. And I see the amount of pedestrians in that area. And that's one place, there's no need to go that fast there. And it, that's the only way to protect those people. There's that volume of people right there. Not occasionally, but all day long, all night long, because they go back and forth in that. And, you know, let's look at it again. We'll take a ride. We'll see, see what people agree or not. And it's our obligation as a town to protect the people on a road that the town owns.
Well, then revisit Cedar Street. All I'm saying.
And that, that's fine if you, you bring that up. But I didn't know that.
We.
So we have a conversation about it, like.
We voted on a speed bump. Who changed it from a speed bump to a, to two speed bumps? Who did it?
We did.
I'd like to know.
I guess we did.
I think, I guess we did.
I think we did say two.
No, we didn't. I went back on the tape, so we did not.
We just heard it was determined it was a safety issue. That's why two were put out.
Well, like you said, it'll only be there till November and then only should be getting Academy Street. Should lower the traffic down and maybe we'll make it one way.
Exactly. I, I, I think you'll see a big difference, John, if we end up opening an Academy Street.
If you have people speeding down Pillsbury, why won't they speed down Academy?
Oh, they will. Oh, they will.
He's gonna get the volume of people.
They speed up Prospect.
Come down to Academy when it's open.
Yeah. It's not, it's, it's more open on Academy and, you know, they go fast up there, but the pedestrians don't see them on.
Catherine, they're speeding up Prospect.
Yes, they are.
It's horrible.
They're speeding up Prospect.
Oh, yeah.
Prospect. You think that they're speed, you think that they're coming up right at the stop sign and all of a sudden you go to turn and it's like, wow. They're right in front of you. You have to stamp on the brake. Horrible.
Everywhere. They used, they used to be doing wheelies. Now they have cars.
Police patrol.
Gee, he's up on tickets.
He'd be everywhere all the time. And that's why speed bumps help.
Work.
Get out of exit 20 and get downtown. All my projects on the.
We have a pedestrian strike on Pillsbury Street. Do you know how many resources it takes to put all of our officers on one street? Because we decided that maybe a speed bump, because maybe two people out of the forty-two hundred people in the town of Tilton, you have the chief of police, that I am EOC, okay, AMD, and I'm, I'm the head of the department to, to kind of, you guys ask me because I'm out there all the time. I was born and raised on Daniel. I lived at six Daniel Drive. I know that area. I didn't have to drive up there and look. I know the traffic that's up there. And also, we can talk about all these other streets. You were talking about a school zone. You were talking about Tilton Prep School. It doesn't matter if it's Tilton Prep or Wintisquam. If it needs to be there for pedestrians, we should do it. You know, and if somebody has an issue with, then I guess, like you said, you guys revisit it and go from there. But that was my decision. It was DPW and Scott, we went up there and that's what we decided. So I guess give us a little more direction next time.
I would rather you have put in two recognizing there was a need and a safety issue than saying, oh, the board only voted for one. We're gonna ignore the safety issue and not put in two. That's just my opinion.
It was just hard because you wanted to get one close to where they're crossing. And when you come up over the hill, the knoll, and everybody knows what it is right off of, you know, it, it, it's right there quick. And then you have this long stretch after that that is just wide open.
Correct.
So.
It's difficult for contractors who have trailers and equipment and heavy trucks.
It is.
Speed bumps.
It is.
And they can crawl over them, but your equipment still.
Yeah, they do.
It's very hard.
Yeah.
On the trucks, on their springs.
Yeah. I agree. And that, and.
And you don't have to be speeding.
No, you're right.
I take the safety of the kids over somebody's equipment getting bumpy.
That's right.
I agree.
Yep.
I agree with you, John.
I'm just saying, that's, that's why they complained.
Yep.
All right. There, my understanding is next week they're starting paving. I just for the Poplar Street and Maple Court, our neighbor that used to, that now owns the old Daniels place has opened it up for parking for people on Maple Court and Poplar. Mr., Mr. Morris. So I'd like to shout out, thank him for allowing us to all park there while the paving's going on. And I've notified all the neighbors, myself personally. Last but not least, and I'm don't wanna be called hot under the collar on this one, but I am very hot under the collar on this one. Senior Center floors. Talk about safety issues. Nothing's done. It's been almost two months now since I've identified an issue that someone fell flat on their face because of a issue with the floors. We've identified it. We went out, got quotes.
Only got one quote. We're still, Lowe's has not, well, Lowe's got back to you?
Public Works Director said he was gonna go up there, use the proper cement and put them back down properly.
We.
Yeah.
But, but more are coming up.
Yeah.
So, and they will continue to come up. And we know that they'll continue to come up. We got a quote from, from underneath to, to secure the basement. We already have that quote.
Yeah, but I think the board didn't agree to wanna do that. Wasn't that the last meeting?
One person agreed not to do that.
I can tell you right now, you don't do that. You do that, you're gonna rock your floor out.
All right. Well, I don't think Kevin was given the proper direction because I got the same impression he did.
I thought he, I thought he even suggested that you don't work. I thought that's what I.
Yeah, I, I, I could have invited him to come tonight.
We don't meet for two more weeks. That's two more weeks and it's well over two months. This is a safety issue, a liability. Let me repeat, a safety issue and a liability for a town-owned property.
Right.
Right?
You put runners over it, right?
Go ahead, John.
No, I was agreeing. If it's, if it's a safety issue until we can get it fully repaired, then we shut it down until it's repaired.
So, remind me what, where we went after you went underneath. And I think, did Kevin visit it as well?
Yes, he did. Yep.
He did.
What was the determination? Weren't we waiting for two more quotes?
We, they have the quote, they have the quote, Lowe's has the quote. They just wanted them to do the installation. We have the square footage and we have the square footage from Home Beautiful. But we agreed that Kevin was going to do the work. We all agreed that Kevin was going to do the work at the Senior Center, did we not?
We did. And because you said that quote from Home Beautiful was.
We had the square footage is what we needed. And that's what we needed.
So what is the project? To remove the existing floor and replace it?
Correct.
He was gonna do something with gluing them down or whatever he had.
Yeah, the current ones have been glued down. I wasn't aware, I was not made aware that there were any additional ones coming up. So maybe that's something new. But, and Kevin was not made aware of that either that I'm aware of. But I know Kevin has it on his plan. His guy that was the floor expert broke his right arm over the weekend. He's been working for us for a week. So.
Not at work.
Not at work. No, he fell, he was working on his deck, I guess, and fell off his deck. So now he's gonna be behind a little bit, but Kevin has it on his plan. I don't know where he has it, but I will ask him, you know, if you want. And if we need to get in there sooner to get it done sooner, then.
So Kevin did go and.
Yeah, yeah, he's looked at, he.
He fixed the ones that were, that were coming up?
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and you're saying there's more that are coming up?
Yeah. Okay. Well, he's not made aware of that, but I will make him aware.
Can you make it? Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
And then the plan is to take everything up in, is that the, what we had talked about?
Yeah, yeah, he's gonna look and see.
We do it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Anything else?
Have something in non-public.
Okay. Vice Chair Scanlon, you are up.
Yeah. No, I don't have anything at all. Oh, I was going to talk to the chief. I don't know if it's, I should or shouldn't, but this statue, just to maintain it, doesn't need a big scrubbing because we've been doing it. I just wanted to go out there. We bought the cleaner. I did Mabel. I wanted to do America out here and just spray it. I, I mean, if I, I go out there and stand there, what's the best way?
Well, if you, you let me know what day and I'll, I'll go out there with you. Let's do that. And I'll, I'll bring the cruiser out and I can do traffic for you and watch you back. How about that? I can do that.
Perfect. Take ten, fifteen minutes.
And you too, if you're. Hey, if you ask, I'll do the same.
The same day.
I, like, again, I'd, no, don't want anybody to get hit, so.
Are you doing it in the trough? The one in the trough? You're gonna cover the plants?
So what I use is completely organic. I've been used for years. I used, been used at the cemetery. Doesn't hurt any of the grasses. I get all over it.
There are some perennials on either side of the monument.
But I, I do put some plastic.
Doesn't matter. Okay. I do plan on getting those out of there this weekend or the next.
I just wanted to remind him.
And that's, that's all I had to do. The other ones were on the side of the road.
You make sure you're talking into the mic, so that way John can hear you.
Okay. I got you. Okay, thanks. That's it for me.
Anything else? Selectmen Hanson, you are up.
Uh, no, the only things I had that are my notes to talk about, I think Catherine already talked about. I had the FEMA map and the town properties, so I am good. Thank you.
Okay. The only thing I had, someone had brought up to me in regards to Ashlot Drive. And it was the, the paving aspect of it. It's starting to sink again. I'm trying to think of what number. It's, it's, what number's Kevin's? You know what I'm talking about, right? So they had, you know, yeah. So he mentioned to me today that they were, that it's really starting to sink again. And he wanted to know if we could have at least DPW take a look at it. I don't know.
What is sinking?
The road.
The road.
The road.
Little pieces of it or areas?
He said it's getting, I haven't, I didn't go out there.
Like tire ruts and?
I'll take a ride out there tomorrow, but.
Then just.
Yeah. So they paved it and there was a.
Up by the wetlands.
Yeah.
Up by the wetlands.
Up by the wetlands.
Oh, are there any out there still?
I know. Everything's so dry.
Interesting.
But he said that the, the road is starting to divot again.
It's probably, you know, peat bog.
Eric, if you text me, I'll have Kevin go up and, after you do, I'll have Kevin go up, take a peek at it.
I'll take, yeah, I'll take a run up there. I'll take some pictures and send it to you and.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, I'll send it to Kevin.
I think, I think about four or five years ago, this happened.
It.
And we.
Forty. Yeah, forty Ashlot Drive. So, yes, that's what he's, that's what he was telling me, is that they did and Kevin came out, fixed it, and he said it looked beautiful. He said, but all of a sudden now it's really starting to dip again and it's really.
I think it's a peat bog out there or something.
There'd be something underground.
Well, if the water dries up, then there's nothing to hold it up, which sounds odd, but.
Right.
There's no hydraulic.
So, yeah. So I'll go, I'll go, I'll take some pictures of it. I just, it was in my head, so it was brought up to me today and I didn't get a chance to get over there, so. That was all I had. So we're definitely running behind. So at six, four, yeah, seven thirty-two, I'll open it up for public comment.
You don't have anything?
I, no, just the Ashlot Drive one. Hearing none.
Just John on there.
Yep. All right. So a closed public comment. All right. Anybody have anything else before we, we move further into?
One thing, the town, we did get notification, notification that they will be doing the sewer line from the construction company up on Lancaster onto Autumn Drive. And that should stop, start in a couple of weeks. We were notified and that's gonna be a, a good chunk of the winter. So just know, everybody that's listening, there'll be some delays, but I'll make sure to put those out on social media and alert when we know further.
Are they gonna put signs and stuff? Because especially for people that are coming off Route three Yeah. onto Lancaster, they, yeah, or coming down the hill, they try to cut through.
Yeah, we could, they're probably gonna put their road signs with, we'll have least detail out there and also flaggers and we can put out, you know, message board if we have to do that.
They should definitely put one out at the intersection of Philbrook and Cram Road because people could decide instead of going down there, they could go
I'll judge it.
Straight or left. Yeah, they're putting up at that intersection. People could avoid it.
Okay. We ready? Okay. The time being, seven thirty-three PM, I make a motion to move into non-public per RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two, one, B, C.
Constantino, second.
Adams. Oh, yes. We're gonna do a roll call. Adams.
Constantino, yes.
Could you refresh me what those are for?
Yep. So B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself. Unless, excuse me, unless such person requests an open meeting, this exemption shall extend to any application for assistance or tax abatement or waiver of a fee, fine, or levy if based on inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
Scanlon, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Okay.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, like to seal the minutes of September fourth, twenty twenty-five, because the reasons justifying the need for the non-public session still remain.
Do we need to say anything about hiring?
Oh.
Has he accepted? Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to, would you like to do it?
Okay. Would you like to, would you like to do it?
No, you can.
Supervisor.
Not proper.
I can, I can, yeah. So, uh.
Hired, hired a part-time land use consultant.
Yep, we hired a part-time land use consultant. Do you want?
Name?
Uh, Dari Sasan for twenty hours a week.
For twenty hours a week?
Up to twenty hours a week.
Sorry, for up to twenty hours a week.
Yep. Yay.
Yes.
Welcome back, Dari.
Alright. Um.
Motion to seal?
Yeah, I did that already.
You did.
I missed it.
Yeah, you did.
Who who seconded that?
John.
Oh, John did, I'm sorry.
Did it?
Yep.
Did you do a roll call on that?
Yes.
He did, yes. Are we in public?
We are, yeah.
Yes.
Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Pick one.
Scanlon, yes.
Constantino, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Hanson, yes.
Adams, yes.
Good night, everybody.
Time of adjournment is eight twenty six. Have a good night, everyone.